Okay, we're gonna call the special session to order here because it is 4:30. If I could have everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I appreciate everybody who is here this afternoon and anybody who might be watching online. So, thank you for joining us here. And we need to move to 1.02 and have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I move to adopt the agendas presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion on tonight's agenda? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are gonna move on to 2.01. This is gonna be our discussion in relation to not only yesterday's announcement, but how we are going to proceed to start the school year with masks. And I will turn it over to Dr. Buck.
Ms. Lynda, the clicker is not working. That helps. Alright, so we'll start in the presentation. We do have some guests from Jackson County Health Department who will speak at part of this as well. So, what do we know now? So, in-person learning is the best learning format. We all know that. We had about 140 days of in-person for K through 3, about 120 for 4 through 6, and about 70 plus something as far as 7 through 12. In-person's important. We had some people had their kids had quarantines for, you know, three sets of quarantines. That's a month and a half of quarantine. So, some of the change you're gonna see later on by the Jackson County Health Department will help with that if we do have masks on with our quarantine rule change. So, you'll see that. Those are their rules, not our rules on quarantine. We follow them. The first semester, we had about 600-plus cases and only about 5% or 6% of those were spread at school. That is not the Delta variant though. It was pre-Delta variant. Those tend to be in special programs. One particular building which also had high-density housing in that certain tenants area. And then winter sports were very much hit hard as well. We had around 1,000 quarantine isolations in our staff and student body in mid-November, which was not sustainable. So, that's kind of a recap of where we were. You'll see this language later on, Jackson County Health Department, but I think this is true for everyone. We want to ensure the protection and well-being of students, teachers, and staff. We want to maintain in-person education with minimized disruptions. And we want to prevent person-to-person transmission in school settings. We want to have a successful school year. We need our kids here. The next slide will show the number of days in each month by the number of cases per 100,000 for 14 days. So, this is one of the big metrics you see nationally as well. This is as of noon on Monday. I did not update it since Monday. The numbers will change some, usually going up, not down, as new data gets collected and divvied out to the right spots. This does not include Kansas City nor Independence. So, Independence has their own health department. Kansas City has their own health department. So, this is out of a little bit over 271,000 people in eastern Jackson County health area. And so, this data is backtrack taking Independence out all the way back to March of 2020. So, if you kind of look on the left side, you see a column that goes, starts off with 0 and it goes down to 1,000 plus. So, that's the number of cases per 100,000 in 14 days. Alright, and so you can see then the second column, how many days we spent in each one of those typical settings. So, in March, we had 16 days, the first half of March last year, with no cases. And then we had some cases. It took until June before we finally got over 100 cases per 100,000 in 14 days. You can see in July, we made it to 200s. And then it wasn't until we got to October, and we came to October, we hit the 400s. And you can see November, December, January, when things were really rough, especially for us in November. And that's why at Thanksgiving time, we moved to a virtual setting until early January. Things definitely got better. And you can see why in May, it was definitely able to go back to recommend masks, not require masks. It was very sustainable to do so. We had a good summer school. July with Delta variant taking over, over 80% cases of Delta variant. You can see our county is experiencing a different shift. It's starting to look more like it was in October and approaching that November number. And compared to last July, we definitely have more cases per population than we did last July. A little bit on Delta variant, and the Health Department can explain more of this. I'm just taking this right off the CDC. Right now, we're over 80% of all new cases are Delta variant. Cases have increased over 300% nationally from June 19th to July 23rd. We've also had an increase in hospitalizations and deaths in the nation. More transmissible. Different studies say different things, but it ranges from what I could find, 40 to 200% more transmissible per the CDC data release last Friday. Over 90% of hospitalizations are unvaccinated. There's, they talk a little bit about a Cape Cod super-spreader. I think that number of cases have gone up quite a bit since that time. But you can see quite a few of those were vaccinated. That was part of their data release. And they talk about viral loads and positive cases being 1,000 times than the Alpha version or the original version. So, that was the information released last week, Friday by CDC. If you look at eastern Jackson County, and you'll see this in a different format here and a little bit from Jackson County Health Department. You can see the gating criteria of the metro area used, that red line is when there's, see it's too high? You can see that November through January time will be spiked high. And you can see the current incline here in July, where we're heading. So, we're over 500 now. If you look at percent positives, again, that's also increasing again, much like it was in the winter. I'm gonna take over here because of the next several slides that they created. And I think they had that last slide very similar, but updated. So, whenever Bridgette and Ray, I'd like to introduce Bridgette and Ray from the Jackson County Health Department. I'll let them introduce themselves and then, and after they introduce themselves, we'll let them talk by slides and I'll click when they tell me to click. So, Bridgette, you wanna introduce yourself?
Yes, Bridget Schaefer, Director of the Jackson County Health Department.
Alright, good evening, afternoon, I should say. Ray DeLugalecki, Assistant Health Director at Jackson County Health Department.
Alright, so I just wanna start off by acknowledging what a year or last 17 months this has been. And this has really been, COVID-19 has really disrupted our society pretty significantly in ways that I had never imagined. So, I just wanna sincerely appreciate the School Board here, the administration that we've been working with, Terri Hansen, her team, everyone that has helped us mitigate spread of disease within the school setting. So, just thank you very much for everything that you guys have done. I wish that today I was coming here with a more rosy outlook or a better picture on what's going on within eastern Jackson County. But that's not really the case. So, as you see here on the screen, in July of 20, July 27th, so just last week, the CDC updated their guidance for fully vaccinated individuals, given the new evidence regarding the Delta variant. This guidance says that regardless of vaccination status, people should wear a mask indoors in areas of substantial or high transmission. Currently, on the right-hand side of the screen, you're seeing a time lapse from June 8th, June 28th to July 28th. And you can see that in Missouri, that continues to change where almost 70% of the counties by the end of July were in areas of high transmission. And we're seeing that in Kansas City metro area as well. You can see the high transmission is anything greater than 100 new cases per 100,000 in the past seven days. And as Dr. Buck already mentioned, we're well over that 500 mark at this point in eastern Jackson County. Also, the percent positive in the last seven days, we are at 15%. And high transmission is anything greater than 10%. This next slide here is a map of Missouri. And this is just showing a more detailed level of the state. And for those that know me well, they know I'm a competitive person. This is not the leaderboard that I want to be on as Jackson County. On the left side, you're seeing that Jackson County is third in 117 different jurisdictions in cases per 100,000 for the entire population, or for the entire duration of COVID-19. And then in the past seven days, we're now third as well. So, we're seeing this increasing case rate in Jackson County. And this is something that we should all be very aware and focused on over the next few weeks, months for the duration ahead. So, with that too, and I didn't put this on a slide, if we go even deeper into the Kansas City metro data, so that's on PrepareMetroKC.org, you can see that Jackson County in the last 30, 60, 90 days is that number-one leader in the metro on cases per 100,000. Again, not a place that we want to be in as a county or jurisdiction. This slide is, was presented to our school superintendents meeting, at our school superintendent's meeting on Tuesday. So, this data is from August 3rd. The data from here on out, moving forward, as Dr. Buck mentioned, won't include Kansas City, Missouri, or Independence. It is Jackson County Health Department data. And really, the highlights from this slide include the seven-day average has nearly tripled in the last month. And then the same similarly with that 14-day case rate, it has nearly tripled in the last month as well. And case levels that we're seeing right now are what we were seeing in late October and early November. So, that trend just continues to go up. And it's a pretty steep incline as that spikes. As we look at case rates by age group, this is showing those over time. So, from March 2020 to where we're at now. And you can see that the case rates have a more steep upward trajectory starting in kind of end of June. And in April and May, the 10- to 14-year-old age groups, they had the highest case rates in each of those months. And now, in both June and July, the highest case rates are in the 20 to 24 age group. As we look at percent positivity, things that I want to highlight, so our testing numbers of people getting tests per week has been increasing, which is good. Although, our percent positivity is increasing as well. So, like I said, it's over 15%. What is important with this is despite the substantial increase in the number of tests, our percent positive is still increasing, which suggests that we're not testing enough to find those people with disease and then appropriately isolate and quarantine. So, we're still having uncontrolled transmission in our community. And then... And then as far as hospitalizations, hospitalizations do continue to increase. On July 27th, the region saw 151 new hospitalizations in a single day. This is a level that we have not seen at the hospitals since January of 2021. Many hospitals are reporting being on high volume, including Children's Mercy. And demographics of patients are trending to a younger age group as well, which we have not seen in previous waves of this illness. The vast majority of those hospitalized are individuals that are not vaccinated as well. So, it's important to note that hospitalizations have a two- to three-week lag in, behind that case data. So, as cases continue to surge, two to three weeks later, we will see those hospitalizations increase even more. So, this will prolong the pressure that our hospitals are facing as we continue to see this increase. Tomorrow, the chief medical officers around the region are going to be providing updates on what's happening at the hospital level. Hopefully, you know, elected officials and others are invited to attend to that conference as well. And I turn it over to Ray.
Okay, fantastic. So, I'm gonna go ahead and add a little bit to what Bridgette had briefly reviewed as far as the trends we were seeing. And hopefully, I can provide some additional context as to what is driving some of these trends and how we can mitigate it. Okay, so, in short, and I think at this point, it's really no secret. It's been communicated widely throughout the country. The Delta variant is driving much of the recent trends that we are seeing, specifically in eastern Jackson County, as well as throughout the Midwest and the entire United States. In short, there's really no sugarcoating it. The Delta variant is and has completely changed the game as far as our response and our ability to mitigate this crisis, requiring an appropriate response from us as well. So, as Dr. Buck alluded to, and I think this is, again, quite common knowledge at this point, Delta is much more transmissible than the original ancestral strain of COVID-19. The R0 for the original or ancestral strain was identified between 2.3 and 2.7. So, that basically means that for every one person who is infected with this ancestral strain of coronavirus, on average, 2.3 to 2.7 other people are infected as well. For the Delta variant in particular, the R0 is identified between 5 and 8, meaning that, again, for every one individual infected, they are infecting on average five to eight other people. And so, this is substantial. This is actually higher than the common cold, flu, smallpox, the Ebola virus, even the 1918 strain of the pandemic flu, also known as the Spanish flu. For some additional context, it's actually right in line with the virus that causes the chickenpox as far as how contagious it is. So, for the Delta variant in particular, the mechanism for infection is not necessarily novel. We're not seeing something that is completely unheard of or we haven't seen before. With Delta, we are simply seeing more virus much more quickly. And so, the implications for this are substantial. Infection occurs in its most simplistic form when people are exposed to an infectious dose of viral particles. When Delta-infected individuals are shedding up to 1,000 times more virus than with the original strains, it changes the game as far as exposure and context. So, there is some good news here, obviously. And the good news is that the vaccines still work against Delta. Vaccine effectiveness against hospitalization and death, it remains high for all of the variants that we have right now. Unfortunately, emerging data is suggesting lower effectiveness against confirmed infection and symptomatic disease, particularly for the Delta and the upcoming Gamma variant. I will note in this context, however, that even though people can become infected, the vaccines still offer some protection as far as milder symptoms than what would have previously been experienced if the person was not vaccinated. Based on, again, recent research from the CDC, it also appears that vaccinated individuals who are infected with the Delta variant have the potential to still shed the virus, which is substantially, or which is substantial, especially if you have large pockets of unvaccinated individuals that you're trying to protect. So, the Delta variant isn't the only thing. It's not the only thing that we need to consider. It's not the only thing that is going to be driving or known to drive the spread that we are experiencing right now. So, on this slide in particular, on the upper-left-hand side, I know it's hard to see, we actually have vaccination rates for eastern Jackson County. And it's actually broken down in two different ways, just to, just for clarity. And so, on the top, you can see total vaccinated by total population. On the bottom, right below that little small table, it's total vaccinated by eligible population. And unfortunately, we are still very far away from the 70% to 80% that we need to ensure meaningful community protection through some form of herd immunity. We are seeing a slight uptick in vaccinations. This is evidenced by the green text that's been highlighted. It's in the appropriate or the age groups that we would want it to be. So, the younger age groups, 10 to 14, 15 to 19, and 20 to 24, have all seen subsequent bumps in vaccination rates over the last seven days. However, these populations already had lower vaccination rates. We don't necessarily expect that these vaccinations to do anything for us in the immediate term. It does take at least a month for an individual to develop full protection from the vaccines. So, that is two weeks past the second dose, which is what we would want to see. This is just another way of looking at the difference between unvaccinated and vaccinated populations. The reality of our situation is that at this time, case rates are being driven overwhelmingly by those who are unvaccinated, as clearly evidenced by the differences in vaccination rates. So, on the top, you'll see the blue line. That is non-breakthrough case rates. So, that's basic infection. On the bottom, it's a smaller line. It's a small black line, but you'll see that slight peak there. That is actually breakthrough case rates. So, those are individuals who have been vaccinated but are still being infected. And so, you can see the differences in terms of the case rates between the vaccinated and unvaccinated populations. The case rate for the unvaccinated is over five times higher than that of the vaccinated. Excuse me, the case rate for the unvaccinated is five times higher than that of the vaccinated. Okay, so that brings us to back-to-school guidance. And briefly, I want to review some of the key points that we discussed with area superintendents initially last week. And then we followed that up with another discussion based on the updates that came in late from the Centers for Disease Control. So, goals, as Dr. Buck had alluded to, the goals are the same. The goals haven't changed. The goals are pretty much identical from organization to organization, putting out back-to-school guidance. And as Dr. Buck alluded to, the first priority is ensuring the protection and well-being of students, teachers, and staff. The second is maintaining in-person education with minimized disruptions. And the third is actually something that influences the first two, which is preventing person-to-person transmission in school settings, which can certainly endanger the well-being of students, teachers, and staff, and also provide substantial disruption to the learning environment. So, I know there's a lot going on in this slide and I really appreciate it, but I think this is really, really important. So, before we get into the guidance, I wanted to briefly touch upon risk, which drives guidance. And also allude to why there's so much attention being placed on schools. I know that's kind of a unique phenomenon in that, from the beginning of this pandemic, we've heard everything about schools. And hopefully, we can touch upon why we're hearing that and what are some of the implications we need to consider as we move forward. So, for quite some time throughout this pandemic, very early on in this pandemic, actually, we learned a great deal about the factors that influence risk associated with transmission. So, for instance, and you can see on the top portion of the slide there, we have a good body of evidence to support the fact that risk increases indoors with minimal air circulation as opposed to outdoors with plenty of ventilation. We know that risk increases substantially with higher numbers of people in close proximity for an extended period of time. And this risk is not mitigated at all if we do not have people employing mitigation tactics, which are the masking, the social distancing, hand washing, all of those things that we've been told to do since the beginning of the pandemic. And lastly, we know that risk increases, and risk of transmission in particular increases, with high numbers of susceptible populations congregating in a defined setting. And what that basically means is if you have a high number or a high group of population who are unvaccinated or susceptible to transmission, congregating with some of the factors that are mentioned above, some of those factors that contribute to increased risk of transmission of this particular virus. And so, as you can all guess, risk fluctuates based on the setting that you are experiencing in the community. For instance, if you go to the grocery store, your risk is going to change based on those characteristics that you see on this slide. So, you're indoors, there's more air circulation in that setting. You're not spending close proximity with other people for an extended period of time, namely 15 minutes. Mitigation measures may or not, may or may not be employed. And then the amount of people who are susceptible is varied, right? Because there's different vaccination rates within that particular setting. The Delta variant did not change any of these things. These things are all still in play, very much in play. The only thing that the Delta variant did is turbocharge transmission with this risk. As I mentioned before, individuals, infected individuals are shedding much, much, much more virus, more quickly than they would have with other variants. And so, this certainly changes that dynamic around receiving an infectious dose. So, as you can imagine, again, if you're sitting in a setting indoors with high numbers of people with no mitigation tactics and you have the Alpha variant, the Delta variant, that same individual who may be infected is shedding 1,000 times more virus than the Alpha variant, the person who's infected with the Alpha variant. And that changes the dynamics of how you can be exposed to an infectious dose, which is substantial because it drives, obviously, infection. So, before Delta, and Dr. Buck alluded to this. You know, I was actually really quite proud. Every time that he would come on to the school superintendent meeting and he would discuss his data as far as what he was seeing in the school setting, I was really, really proud that we didn't see as much person-to-person transmission in the school setting. And that is truly a testament to the administration, the teachers, the staff, the students, who are actually taking substantial steps to interrupt transmission of this particular virus. Delta unfortunately has the potential to change that. So, this summer, over the summer, epidemiologists, every single day, will go through the data and identify outbreaks that need to be monitored and active outbreaks. Unfortunately, this summer, we're seeing more outbreaks in child settings than with previous variants and the original strain, way back in the beginning of this pandemic. So, five of the six monitored situations that we are monitoring right now involve daycares, summer camps, sports teams. Five of the, five of the eight active outbreaks involve daycares and summer camps. The dynamics of this outbreak are changing and we just need to be cognizant of that as we move forward in our guidance. And so, my final point on this long slide is, what is clear is that sustained school transmission has the potential to impact overall community transmission and vice versa. A child bringing the Delta variant home can easily infect their entire family in the same way that a child bringing the Delta variant into a classroom can infect the entire classroom. The difference, the substantial difference, is mitigation and how we are employing mitigation. How can we prevent a child who is carrying the Delta variant? How can we prevent a child who is carrying the Delta variant into the educational setting from spreading this variant to others and thus mitigating community transmission, which is driving the problems that we're seeing in the healthcare system? So these are just very briefly the resources that were considered in the guidance. Centers for Disease Control, American Academy of Pediatrics, Children's Mercy. The one thing that I feel throughout this pandemic is absolutely no one has been on the same page. It's been maddeningly frustrating. But what I can say now is, it appears everyone is in some, some, some form of block step, which is, which is good. Next slide, please. So, the guidance starts with vaccination. Really, vaccination remains the best option for interrupting transmission. It remains our best option for preventing substantial strain on the healthcare system. You know, we believe that the emergency use authorizations will continue. For those five to 12 should be announced in the coming months. And we hope, hope to really continue to provide protection to the greatest number of people we can, including those individuals who are immunocompromised, and also maintaining some semblance of normalcy within our healthcare system and also the school setting. Next, next slide, please. So masking. So as far, as far as non-pharmaceutical interventions are concerned, the best approach is to layer them. A single non-pharmaceutical intervention, and when I say non-pharmaceutical interventions, I'm not talking, I'm-
Stop. Stop, or you're gonna leave.
Okay. So, non-pharmaceutical interventions, what I'm talking about in those settings, I'm talking about masking, I'm talking about social distancing, I'm talking about hand washing. I'm talking about anything that we can do without, without drugs, without vaccine. And for the longest part of this pandemic, that's all we had. We didn't have vaccine. We still don't have effective therapies. All we have are non-
Okay, hey, we're gonna just pause and ask you to leave. If you can't, be quiet, just leave. No, there's not. This is not a public meeting. Okay, we're gonna take a break. We're gonna take a break right now. We'll take a five-minute break. Ray, you good whenever we're ready to roll again? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna restart. I am gonna ask the audience to please, okay? We can't have the disruptions. What we're trying to do is to listen. We'll ask questions, okay? But we were gonna ask respectfully for no more disruptions during this meeting. If we do, we will ask you to leave. So, Ray, we will turn it back over to you.
Of course. So, our recommendations initially to the area superintendents, two weeks ago at this point, I believe, wasn't this week, it was the week before, previously was to follow both the CDC and American Academy for Pediatrics guidance. And so in that guidance, and both of that guidance now, with the CDC's change, there's the requiring of universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors, regardless of the vaccination status. So based on the skyrocketing transmission rates that we were seeing in Eastern Jackson County and the dangerous hospital capacity that was being communicated to us by the chief medical officers of the area hospitals in the Kansas City region, we also made the recommendation to the county for a mask mandate to be put in place for Eastern Jackson County. This mandate will go into effect August 9th, and it will cover everyone five and older, including those in a school setting. Next slide, please. So the last part of the guidance that I want to dive into is isolation and quarantine. And this is something that Dr. Buck had touched on previously. Obviously, the act of quarantine is a very intrusive and disruptive process. It's been reserved for those infectious diseases that we investigate at the Jackson County Health Department on a regular basis. But this is our full, really first full-length introduction to quarantine with COVID-19. So, fully vaccinated staff and students can avoid quarantining even when exposed to positive cases. We ask that they self-monitor for 14 days. And if a student or staff who is fully vaccinated tests positive, they still will need to isolate at that time. But this should hopefully mitigate some of the quarantine that occurs through exposure. Students now can be excluded from quarantine. This is unique, and this is different. Students can now be excluded from quarantine even within three to six feet. So even if they're within three to six feet of a positive case for longer than 15 minutes, which would historically be considered a contact, they can avoid quarantine if both students were engaged in consistent and correct use of well-fitting masks. So with the masks being in place, we should see a substantial decrease in the amount of quarantines that we are experiencing at the school setting, which is a very positive step, honestly, in my opinion, and something that hopefully will allow us to minimize disruption to the learning environment to the greatest extent we possibly can. So, in exposure situations where both individuals are not vaccinated and not, not wearing masks, the normal 14-day quarantine set by the CDC will still apply. Next slide, please. Okay, so getting to the end. As I was mentioning before, as far as layering mitigation strategies, this is actually what I was talking about. I was talking about a variety of different strategies all sandwiched together so that you're basically, basically canceling out the faults of individual strategies. It's kind of like that Swiss cheese sort of approach. If you look at a block of Swiss cheese, you don't see the holes because the Swiss cheese is all layered together. It's the same concept with this. So some of those other considerations for mitigation strategies may include physical distancing. So, if you can, at least three feet of distance between students combined with indoor masking is extremely positive. Ventilation, so working to improve ventilation, opening windows or doors, making changes to the HVAC system where possible, or filtration systems. Obviously, there's hand washing and respiratory etiquette. Contact tracing has been a very, very positive, positive force in a school setting. There's absolutely nothing worse than not knowing who the exposures are and who the contacts are and having to do, do blind swaths of quarantine. That's not effective. It's not appropriate. We need to be able to get in and identify where the actual exposure occurred. And the Lee Summit School District nurses and staff have done just an absolutely wonderful job of, of working with, with us to identify who actually is the exposure and who isn't, and trying to maintain kids in the in-person learning environment without that disruption of quarantine. The last thing is cleaning and disinfection. In general, cleaning once a day should be sufficient to remove the, those potential viral particles. This is a respiratory virus, primarily spread through aerosolized droplets and respiratory droplets. So cleaning and disinfection isn't the best option by itself. But again, if you layer it with other strategies, it works together, and it's a good thing. Next slide, please. Okay, so, last, last thing I have, just to briefly touch upon. So we, we've packaged all of this together in a full guidance document for schools. It's nothing new. It's nothing unique. It's the exact same, or at least very, very similar as the Centers for Disease Control, American Academy of Pediatrics, Children's Mercy, a lot of those other partners that have already released guidance out into the community. We basically just synthesized this, this guidance into a single document for Eastern Jackson County in particular. And so we will, will be releasing that guidance to the superintendents. We will also be posting that guidance publicly as well. I think that's all I have today.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. I know that there probably will be quite a few questions here, so-
Of course.
We will circle, circle around to any board members who have questions. And I know Board Member Alan, you had hit the button quite a while ago, so we'll start with you.
Thank you, Board President. I guess to start, would you mind giving us, your backgrounds, each of you? Like, your field of study, your area of expertise, your role in the Health Department?
Yeah, of course.
I'll start, like, Bridget Schaefer, the Director of the Health Department. I have been the Director there for, gosh, almost seven years. And with the Health Department for, for over eight, I think. I can't do the math here. And then, I, my background is really in epidemiology and data analysis. And so, I had worked at another Health Department for six and a half years doing epidemiology. Have a master's in public health. My undergraduate degree was in health science and public health as well.
Yeah, so I'm the Assistant Health Director of the Jackson County Health Department. Been here for about five years, give or take. Worked previously as an epidemiologist in another county. My educational background, I have a master's in public health with an emphasis in epidemiology and health administration and policy, and my undergraduate degree is in exercise physiology. So yeah, I've been in public health for about, about 11 years now, 10, 11 years.
All right, thanks. I just thought the context would help. You didn't just fall off, fall under this last year, I guess, obviously. I don't know if these are slides or pages or what have you, but slide 24? 21, I'm sorry. Slide 21, page 21. It's the, it's the one that has the breakthroughs, right? Vaccination, vaccination status breakthroughs. Are those measured?
Yes.
Breakthrough cases?
Yeah. I mean, is that measured through and reported by doctors' offices, hospitalizations? How's the data gathered?
Yeah, so it's, it's through the normal epidemiological process. So, as we're getting reports of positive cases, you know, I will say, and I will give kudos to our staff, that they go well beyond the CDC in terms of investigating breakthrough cases. The CDC defines breakthrough cases normally in their definition as those individuals who are hospitalized only. As our epidemiologists are getting reports of positive cases, they're also looking into vaccination status and trying to determine if this is actually a breakthrough case.
Can I just follow up on that?
Just-
Excuse me?
Well, just in terms of, if someone is tested and they are, they test positive, but they don't need any medical treatment, does that make sense what I'm saying? Then are those types of cases included in these numbers?
So they're, they're positive but not symptomatic, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, yes, they are. So asymptomatic individuals are also included in the numbers because of the asymptomatic spread.
Thank you.
Do you want me to keep going, sir?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. 24, I believe, slide, page 24, where it says, "We will be back soon. Be safe, be kind," right? Risk of transmission. Basically, are these points measured over, I mean, these points have been measured over what sort of time? All of last year of 2020 into 21, 2021? You said, I mean, this isn't just the spring, the summer, this dates what? How far back?
Yeah, so this, this is actually a body of research and evidence. So, the top portion of the slide, the risk of transmission, that's actually informed by our understanding of transmission of the virus. So, it's a combination of case studies, data from the field, and also research in a clinical setting. So, it's not necessarily something that, I mean, we, we could per se, I guess, in terms of like our outbreaks. But I don't think we track each one of these individual factors by which-
But this is, my question is, is this a body of work over months, right?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Or the past 18 months, it's not just from May of this year through the summer?
Yes, so this has been updated as we've went and better understood.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, that does make sense. In addition to that, and I've wondered this question sometime, and maybe we already know this or don't know this, the effectiveness of wearing a mask is what? I mean, I've heard ranges of under 10% or up to 90%. I don't know what the true number is. What is the true number of, is there a way to understand the effectiveness of wearing a mask to mitigate risk?
Yeah, certainly, certainly. And I think that an important point here is it's not necessarily, it's not just like one number, right? Because you have different, you have source control as far as what the mask is preventing. So, for instance, if someone is infected and they are actively shedding the virus, the mask is acting completely differently than if it was secondary infection control, where my mask was preventing me from inhaling aerosolized particles from someone else. And so the number is different based on those two acts of how the mask is working. So source control is the primary mechanism for how masks work. They're the most effective way. And of course, that depends on what kind of mask you're using, right? So if you're using like a clinical grade N95, it's substantially better, and all the way down to, you know, just kind of your basic kind of cloth mask. So, and there's all kinds of things in between there. There's surgical masks, there's using different kinds of fabrics. So we have a body of evidence for different types of masks and how effective that we think they are. But, you know, I think that the most important point is looking at those studies at the community level of what happens after we implement a certain policy change around masking in particular. We see decreased community transmission, and the body of evidence is actually quite large in that sense.
A couple more, Ryan, are you good with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Keep going.
Not for me to stretch a meeting. I guess I have done that a few times, haven't I? All right, so back to this mask issue. Give me this evaluation of, and I hear this occasionally, when I'm wearing a mask, I'm breathing back in all this harmful bacteria, or carbon monoxide, and that, in fact, is completely unhealthy. So dispel that, reinforce that, is it true, false? Tell me what that answer is.
Yeah, so thankfully, we have a really good body of evidence as far as how masks work and how safe and effective they are, just based on our medical community's use of them for years and years and years. We know that masks are not presenting any sort of issues around rebreathing air that you're expelling. That's a common misconception. There is actually a lot of studies that suggest that there's no really physiological changes as far as wearing a mask. So your respiratory rate, your blood oxygen level, your pulse, all of those things are maintained even when you're wearing two masks, and there's been studies with that. And so, you know, I think we have a really good body of evidence to suggest that, you know, masks are safe, otherwise we wouldn't use them for our healthcare professionals. You know, obviously, there is the element of masks are not fun to wear, no one wants to wear a mask. I don't think I've met a single person that wants to wear a mask. But, you know, that is one aspect of this, but it's not necessarily the physiological side of how we evaluate effectiveness or a mask's effect on a person.
One more question, Ryan, I promise. Maybe more. One right now. 27, slide 27, I believe, right? CDC, you mentioned guidance by CDC, you mentioned guidance by American Academy of Pediatric Physicians or Physicians?
Yeah, pediatric.
Do you know or have the actual verbiage, right? Guidance is one thing, recommendation is one thing, requirements are another thing. Give me some, expand on that term, guidance.
So, I guess in the context of those documents, they're providing, much like that red statement right there, they have their statements that they're providing as far as recommendations. I don't have the exact language in front of me, but it's very, very similar, and I'd be happy to send that out to show you if there's any differences.
All right, thank you.
Board Member Hedrick?
I too have several questions, and I'm going to first go back to slide, I think it's on seven and eight. Sorry, I had to go back so far on that one. Yeah, seven and eight. So could you tell me the significance of that red and that yellow line on that, in that chart, and then the one, or maybe the same answer may be applicable to both, but could you tell us the significance of those, please?
So, we could tell you where they came from. That's actually, there's a group of professionals at the Mid-America Regional Council. It's epidemiologists, public health professionals, school officials, there's a couple other, physicians, there's a physician from Children's Mercy, I think, that sits on that group. And well into 2020, they identified, okay, hey, we need to sit down and identify some metrics that we can all get behind, we can get on the same page as far as like, what's good, what's bad, what's really not good, sort of thing. And so, that's where they came from. This is not necessarily something that came from the Jackson County Health Department, but we include it because it's regional gating criteria. Everyone agreed that, you know, regionally, this is what's good, this is what's not good, sort of thing.
I assumed that, because I did participate last year in, from the CDC, they had a person who kind of spoke to that, so I assumed those were the same types of numbers. So when you say highly transmissible, it's any time that goes above that red line, or the yellow line, or both? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, so, as far as the yellow and red line, since this is gating criteria, some of this was being used to talk about, do we need to move to hybrid levels of school learning, in-person school learning, virtual learning? I believe that was how the gating criteria was being used regionally. When we talk about transmission levels in our community, if we go back a few slides, we can look at that CDC transmission, there we go, just had it. And that is what CDC is identifying as low, moderate, substantial, and high. And that's based on those percent positivity and the cases per 100,000, which is very much like what those other two graphs were, but they're not maybe charted the same way to say what's what.
Okay. On the slide number 15. And I'll wait for you to get there before I get my question to you. So, I think based on my eyesight, which some days is not so great, the two bottom lines there would be zero to four would be the lowest, that's the bottom line, and the one right above that is the five to nine, would that be accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then on this chart, the other thing that I think would be helpful information, and hope maybe you have the data, would be to, because this is cumulative cases since the pandemic began, I would like to really see some of the data on a day-to-day basis, how many new cases are being added in those age groups, because I think that's a much more relevant piece of information. So is that information that you have available, or do you not get that data that way? Does that make sense, what I ask?
We can have our team put that data together for you all, and we can send that to Dr. Buck.
Okay, thank you. And then I think my last question is really on slide 28, I believe, 28? Yeah, on the guidance piece? And I think that's one of the things that, over the last 18 months, we've seen a lot of different guidance and things moving around. And so I think it's really, in my mind, I'm thinking, if now, for example, the quarantine piece, you know, where it says both students were engaged in consistent and correct use of well-fitting masks, well, who makes that decision? Does that make sense, what I'm asking? And so, and what has been done, what research, I assume, has been done to be able to have this guidance in this format compared to what it was six months ago, or eight months ago, or 12 months ago?
Yeah, so, you know, to your first question, as far as who determines what, I think it's really a tandem approach between the school nurse and some of the staff, like the teachers, for instance, in the school setting. And if there is a situation where we know little Ray is constantly taking his mask off and not wearing it, or, you know, trying to, whatever, then, I mean, we can make, you know, just rational judgment-based decisions at that point. It's not something that's necessarily like the super-formalized process as far as, you know, oh, it has to be on this percentage of the time. We understand that our teachers are asked to do a million things. And so, to the best of our ability, that, you know, we can evaluate the individual situation and determine an appropriate level of risk for a situation. And so that's how we would handle that. As far as how this has evolved over time, you know, I think, you know, we've learned quite a bit more, quite a bit more as far as how transmission occurs and what strategies effectively mitigate risk. One of the actually pioneering studies as far as masks are concerned actually came from Springfield very early on in the pandemic, and it actually occurred with a hairstylist. She was actually at her salon, she had, she didn't know that she was positive, she didn't know that she was actively shedding the virus, she had a mask on, and she worked. She worked for hours and hours and hours, she saw hundreds of clients. And the resulting study that actually came out of that was that, hey, we didn't necessarily see a lot of, we didn't see transmission occurring from this. The mask is actually helping in this context when we factor in other variables. And so, you know, that was huge. It allowed us to take one step further into, as far as a mitigation strategy, start to employ other things that can really ensure we can get children back into an in-person environment. I think that's been the overarching focus. I think the science is trying to do what's right as far as protecting everyone, but we all know in the back of our minds that kids need to be back in the school setting. What can we do to help keep them there? And so this is kind of the result of some of that pioneering work. There were other studies that kind of came on top of that, but I would say that's kind of like the foundational piece to build on.
Okay, so I, sorry, I do have a couple other quick questions. So since this virus is so much more, you can infect so much more, many people, and it's, does that also mean people who are going to get sick get sick faster than they would have with the original COVID-19? Does that?
That is something we are seeing with this. So, on average, with the ancestral strain, people become infectious about six days after infection. With this one, it's about four days on average. So they are becoming more infectious quicker with a more, a higher amount of viral shed.
Okay, and then I, this truly is my last question for you all. I have another one for us to discuss in R7, but, so do you have any research that looks at how long that a mask can be worn at any, you know, for any one period of time before they really should be, you know, changed and, you know?
Yeah. So there are some studies that actually look at different characteristics of a mask. So like, for instance, if it is like, it's like sopping wet, sort of thing. Like, that would be a scenario where we would want to change that mask for it to remain effective. And so there's a whole host of different situations and scenarios to consider as far as mask effectiveness. You know, I will say that it usually revolves around the mask getting wet in some way, shape, or form. That seems to be kind of the driving factor, but we can put together that kind of complete list based on the literature, and I'd be happy to send that over if that would be helpful.
Oh, I am sorry, I do have one more. In terms of the conversations that you've had about students wearing masks outdoors, like, you know, during their recess and that kind of thing, what have you guys talked about that kind of guidance, and what are you discussing at this point?
Yeah, so I will say that the easy answer is that CDC didn't necessarily change, it maintained its exposure definition at the time that they changed their guidance. Just to be a little bit more difficult and dive into kind of the nuance, you know, I think the more complex answer centers around some of the unknowns with Delta. Like, we knew before, we knew with some of that, like the ancestral strain, the alpha strain, we knew that, you know, outdoor settings, generally speaking, we saw a reduced risk of transmission, and that's a good thing, that's very good. But that was also not taking into account a variant where an individual is shedding 1,000 times more viral particles than a previous variant. And so I think that, you know, to be considered a close contact, an individual really, I mean, it's not, it's not simple by any stretch of the, we kind of have this thought process that everyone's a contact if, you know, let's say I was infectious or something like that. We have this kind of viewpoint that everyone, oh, everyone's, you know, a contact. And it's a very specific, you know, definition, right? It's, you know, 15 minutes or longer within six feet. And so going back to the grocery store example, like, you know, you're not going to spend 15 minutes within six feet from some random person that's walking in the grocery store. And so if we are outside on the playground as far as identifying a contact, that would mean that a child would have to be within six feet of another child for longer than 15 minutes, just to be considered a contact. And so, you know, with the Delta variant and shedding 1,000 times more viral particles, I just don't think we necessarily have the research at this time to say with certainty that, you know, we can change this, that risk is mitigated and we're fine. You know, I think that it's something that we're going to closely monitor as we move forward. I know the CDC is certainly going to closely monitor it. And I personally believe that some of the risk is mitigated by being outdoors, but, you know, again, I can't, I can't speak to the fact that someone is shedding 1,000 times more viral particles within six feet of another individual and say with certainty that that person is not going to be infected, just because Delta variant is relatively new as far as our understanding of that context.
So I'm taking from that, you're saying that the recommendation would be to have masks on on the playground as well?
Not necessarily, not necessarily. That is not, that is not our, like, the mask mandate does not go into that, we don't touch upon that. Generally speaking, outdoors, that's a better environment for sure. What we're talking, what I was talking about was from a quarantine perspective, or identification of a close contact.
Well, I was really thinking more from a risk perspective, so I appreciate that clarification.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Campbell?
I appreciate you sharing this information, and I appreciate, especially appreciate the layering aspect of this, which I think, to Dr. Buck's credit and all of the staff credit and parents and students, last year, it was the layering that was so important and ongoing. And so slide 29 clearly kind of lays out what that layering looks like. And my question is more for Dr. Buck and team around, we know what we've done in the past, many people that are new to our district don't know what we've done in the past, and we're entering a new school year. So can we walk through this layering and what that looks like for this year?
I would say part of that's going to be on your vote tonight as far as the mask part, but we have a document called Safe Return. Does he ask every district in the state to call it Safe Return? It was posted up on June 23rd, and we continue to look at and revise that. In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon to look at parts of that. So, but if anybody wants to see, it's on our website in the front page, I believe, Katie, correct? Called the Safe Return, and you can click on it, and you can see many, many pages that go right through all these pieces, yes?
And all of these factors, so physical distancing, ventilation, we know Kyle Gurrell and his team have focused very much on ventilation, hand washing, that's going to be in place, contract tracing, we did that last year, we're continuing that going forward, cleaning and disinfection, that was a lot of the teams working hard on that, 24/7, all of that stays in place, right?
Yeah, some of it's changed, so what we've learned, remember this time last year, we were getting advice to disinfect surfaces in front of a kid before another kid used the same setting. So every hour between class change and secondary, we were literally disinfecting the tables or chairs or desks or on. That is not the case, it's not the, we were finding out it's more of an aerosol than we knew 12 months ago. So now it's just a once-a-day deep clean throughout, so. And after Jackson County Health Department's done, if you want to ask Dr. Miller, or Kyle Gurrell can come up and speak more to that if you want. if you want.
Great. Appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. Buck. I think my next question is because we heard from many parents that may have children with disabilities, especially speech-related disabilities. And I know last year, Dr. Mathis shared with us, she came into the room and showed us the mask that many of the teachers would be wearing in that situation. That was a clear covering over the mouth so that the mouth could still be seen. Are we planning to have those same types of masks? And so parents that have children with disabilities can be assured that we'll have things in place to meet each child where they are and meet each child in person as we can?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Board member Fritchy?
Thank you very much. I wanted to go back to the, the, some comments you guys made about breakthrough cases. And I don't know if I didn't hear you right. I think I, I definitely heard you that you counted those numbers as they went into the hospitals. But when folks get, go and get tested for COVID, do they have to say whether they have been vaccinated or not? So when you get those results back, do those results count as breakthrough?
So they, they do not have to say whether they're vaccinated or not. But our team goes an extra level, I guess you could say, as far as investigating breakthrough cases, just so we really ensure that we have a thorough understanding of breakthrough cases. And so we will actually look, look at vaccination status as we're getting positive cases in to, to see if that is something that we should, we should be evaluating.
So you can cross-reference all of those because you do have the record of everyone who's been vaccinated?
That, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then I have, kind of just have another comment slash question here. Obviously, you know, I think what we've learned since March of 2020, I think we've all learned a lot through our experience and through trial and error and through lots of documentation and things like that. But our priority, obviously, a lot of the government agencies from national to state to county to local are recommending or asking us to prioritize in-person learning. I personally think that that's our number one priority is to get our kids back and keep them all in school as much as possible. So in order to do that, what we've learned from, from that date, from March 2020 to now, okay? What's your advice based on what we've learned to order, in order to prioritize that in-person learning and get our kids back to school and keep them in school? I mean, I saw your presentation, but kind of sum up.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I honestly think and probably what I would say is that, you know, we can't necessarily look at this situation in isolation. And so what happens out in the community, what happens in different parts of the community as far as transmission of this particular virus will certainly impact others. And so we're actually seeing that with healthcare, right? So healthcare is something that we all rely on. And if it came to a situation where if, if I was having a heart attack or my, a family member was having a stroke, or I, you know, a family member needed cancer treatments, those are all real things that we all go through on a daily basis. If it came down to a hospital not being able to accept someone or having to defer treatment, worsening those outcomes, that's, that's something that's very tangible, very real and something we can understand regardless of the sector that we're in. And so that, that's what this is all centered around at this point. You know, I think it's, it's something that has been communicated to us through the, the chief medical officers. And it's, you know, we've seen, we've seen the news of other cities that have went through similar things. You know, it doesn't have to be that way. That's not a normal path for this particular virus. And it's, there are simple things that we can put in place to mitigate transmission. And so just paying attention, I think, is, is very helpful and, and adjusting mitigation based on that, right? This, this is, nothing is, nothing is set in stone. Nothing is concrete. We can, we can be flexible with mitigation, like the different things you're employing, whether it be, you know, social distancing, hand washing stuff. Like that's all adaptable based on the situation in the community.
Thank you.
Unless anybody has any other questions, I have, I have kind of a list of questions here for you. One of the things that I noted on there is that in a quarantine environment, you have noted that students don't quarantine if they are masked. However, you're excluding adults from that. Can you explain why a teacher who is masked and a student who is masked would then, the teacher then would still have to quarantine?
So this is following CDC guidance as far as their masking and quarantine recommendations. We are saying that if you're a fully vaccinated staff person and, and you're exposed, then you do not have to quarantine. But that does not, that's not an exclusion for, for masks. Do you want to add to that?
No, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, yeah, what it boils down to is, you know, for, for students, you know, there's not, especially for those who are 12 and under, there's not necessarily an opportunity for vaccination at this point. And so the opportunity to give them an out from quarantine is, is very important. But as far as adults are concerned, the opportunity for vaccination, which is above and beyond the most effective strategy we have out of everything here as far as reducing illness, injury, hospitalization, death, like that's the preferable option. And so if you're vaccinated, you don't have to deal with a quarantine sort of issues. And that's what we would all prefer you to, to go.
President Murdoch, can I ask, if you're a close contact, but you're vaccinated, but you start showing symptoms, does that then become quarantine or not quarantine?
Yeah, if you, if you begin to show symptoms, you should isolate for the, the 10-day period and get tested as well.
I think, I think my, my ultimate question there is what is the difference between two 16-year-olds who are masked and a 16-year-old student and a 25-year-old teacher masked, even if they are unvaccinated? What is, what is the difference between those people in terms of one quarantining and one not?
Yeah, I think we're starting, you're probably starting to peel back some of CDC policy and like, you know, what they're, what they're looking for as far as outcomes at that point. You know, if you're getting, if we're getting into the, the sense of like, if everyone in the community wears masks, we don't, we don't have any, we're quarantined or anything like that because everyone's wearing masks, we ignore the, really the best solution that we have to not only mitigate this, this particular challenge that we're facing right now, but also to prevent like other variants from forming and, and getting out of this challenge long-term. And so, you know, I think like with the priority of keeping kids in school, you know, the CDC made the strategic decision based on the evidence that, you know, this is permissible. This is something that's important. But for, for everyone else, there are, there are certainly options to avoid quarantine and it, it stems from vaccination.
And under the CDC's guidance, under what is considered substantial and high transmission, you know, it lists that we would need to be under 50 to be in moderate, right? To be in, in yellow and then a certain testing percentage. What's the lowest that we went here in May in terms of our case per 100,000? I couldn't get that to pull up. Like I can't tap on it to see the actual number. Did we ever make it under 50 per 100,000?
Yes, I believe so. I'd have to actually pull up the specific data because I don't have that in front of me. But Bridget's, I think, pulling it up real quick and seeing if she can.
But, well, but that's our, that's the number of average cases. And down below is 191 and so, yeah.
Sorry, I can't access, I don't have access to the internet. So it's.
Yeah. So because, because right, the, the guidance right now is still based on being in a substantial or high transmission area, right? And so based on those two factors, those two metrics that are being out by the CDC, what happens if you fall below one and are still hovering in another? What would the guidance of the health department be at that point?
Yeah. So I can tell you the guidance of the CDC, from what I've seen thus far is that you're, you're taking, like for instance, let's say percent positive dropped below, but a case rate remained high, you would still take case rate. That would drive your decision-making from my understanding of their guidance. But that's, yeah, I'd have to look through it just because it's relatively new.
Okay. I'm just curious because I, I, I think we've been hovering at 50 or above. I mean, if we got below 50, it was probably a pretty short period of time, even in May. One of the things that we know here over the last couple of days, and I mean, it was nice that Children's Mercy clarified a statement that they had in terms of their capacity. What is driving the RSV infections that we're, that we are seeing right now in addition to COVID infections?
I don't, I don't think we have, we definitely don't have a clear understanding of that. I don't think there's been any sort of evidence or support. I, I know that, I know that a lot of people, and I've heard this, that, you know, masks are the, are the cause of this. But there's absolutely nothing to substantiate that. There's not an evidence base that we would rely on. It's, it's just, we think that's, that's what it is. But what we would want to do from a scientific perspective is just have a thorough understanding of what, what that is. And I think you'll hear from the Children's Mercy professionals tomorrow on the CMO call, they'll talk a little bit about what they're experiencing in the hospital system. And there, there may be some opportunities to ask them as well. But I haven't seen a body of evidence to say one way or the other.
Okay, that's fine. Three more questions here. Last year, you know, we had obviously hundreds of people in quarantine sometimes at a time. Almost, I think we were actually over a thousand at, at one point. Was there ever any data collected last year, especially from school settings of kids who were put on quarantining, quarantine, then testing positive as a result of quarantines?
Yeah, there was some national studies that were done. We didn't actually perform any studies here locally though. But we would have to, there's one done in the St. Louis area. Wash U actually conducted it. So yeah, I can certainly pull that up, but nothing done here in the Kansas City metro area from my understanding.
Okay. And then my, my, my last two here. One of the things that we are seeing, you know, one of the things that you put up there was a risk assessment essentially, right? So we're, we're measuring risk and a lot of times we're measuring risk in the medical terms. So is any, what, what is being considered in terms of risk from non-medical? Like how, how do we weigh non-medical risks associated with mitigation strategies versus what benefits we gain obviously from conducting a mitigation strategy?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think that there have been, there have actually been quite a bit of narrative around this. And it's particular to, I think, the school setting. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of analysis around, oh, what's the, what's the word? Like emotional recognition, social interaction of younger children and, and mask wearing. There's, there's been a lot of analysis around, you know, obviously like speech and development and that sort of thing. And so I think the, the amount of information is, is quite astounding as far as being out there. You know, what I, what I will say as far as my understanding of it, it hasn't necessarily been synthesized into a risk assessment from my understanding, from what I've seen per se. It would certainly be interesting to see that in, included. However, there's a lot of talk around how we mitigate the situation that we're in, right? So like if we are in a situation where, you know, as a community, we're struggling with something that is, that has the potential to impact us all, and we're asking everyone to make a small sacrifice as far as like mask wearing, right? Like a small intrusion into their day as far as wearing a mask. You know, there's, there's different ways to mitigate the fact that we have to wear masks. And, and you know, as far as like the emotional recognition, social interaction, you know, I've seen a lot with the clear masks. There's a lot, a lot with parents and the roles that parents play as far as developing social interaction, emotional recognition in younger children as the children are coming home out of the school setting around mom and dad or the guardian or whoever, grandparents, whatever, and, and how that continues and contributes to the development of the child. You know, I think that, I think that what it boils down to is really, there's just a lot to consider. There's a lot of factors, obviously. And, you know, I don't think I've seen anything clear cut on that.
You know, one of, one of the things that, that we have seen as, as essentially mask, I guess, debates have, have obviously started again as, as we go here into the fall, is we have even some other countries in terms of their departments of education coming out and saying, hey, maybe we need to look and be careful about doing universal mask mandates. You know, Great Britain is one of them, right? So their Department of Education has literally said that you need to make it, that it should be optional for some of the reasons you just said, right? Because they're trying to balance which is better, right? Do we, what do we gain from this? What do we gain from this? And I, I just wonder, is, is it a fair statement at all to just go kind of on both sides? We're not sure. So we're taking our, the best we have in terms of information to, to make a decision? Is that accurate? Or, or do you think it's definitive that we know one way or another?
We know what, what exactly. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
That the benefits of masks outweigh the disadvantages of masks?
So, you know, what I would say when we look at other-
And in school children, I'm sorry. I should have been very, very specific. For, for kids in schools, I apologize.
No, I, I think that is completely, you know, fair to say as far as this is a novel virus, we're still understanding how, what the effects are. And, you know, I don't know about anyone else here, but we haven't been in this situation before for at least 100 years. And so there are things that we can take from that last pandemic that we experienced as a country. But, you know, this is a completely different virus with completely different parameters. And some of the parameters that we understand as far as interrupting transmission, like UK, for instance, their vaccination rate is substantially higher than the United States. And so that is certainly a driving factor that, that needs to be considered. But yeah, it's, I mean, we're, I think at this point, you know, with the evidence, with the amount of evidence that's coming out, you know, definitely trying to interpret what is coming out and make the best possible decisions considering those things that we listed above and community transmission. So it's definitely a both.
And I, and I appreciate that answer because I was actually going to mention that, that I, I recognize UK's vaccination rate is significantly higher than what we have here in the US. One of the questions that, that I ended up getting asked recently was in a county like Jackson County where we may have had a mandate in the spring, for example, versus a non-mandated county, do the curves of infection look relatively similar?
Yeah, I think if you-
Or why, if they do?
Yeah. So there, there have been studies that have been done throughout the United States. Kansas was actually included in a study. And from that body of evidence, that's actually one of the bits of supportive evidence that we uncovered as far as mask, masks were concerned, universal masks, was that there was a difference. You know, there is a difference in community transmission rates among, or differentiating between communities that have masks and those that do not have masks. I don't think that there's been anything in particular in Missouri. But again, you know, we have, we have a body of evidence from the United States to rely on.
Okay. And I know it may seem like I'm, I'm peppering you with questions. I, I'm pretty supportive of, of tonight's recommendation, but I do think that there's a lot of questions that we have to continue to ask about this. My final question actually isn't for you. It's actually for Joe. And so you may need the microphone there if you don't mind. So Joe, right now, we have a 30-day mandate from Jackson County that starts on the ninth, so ends obviously in early September, right?
Right.
At the end of that 30 days, there is a question, and maybe you agree or disagree, and you can share with me one way or another. There is a question mark of what happens at that particular point. Can you let us know what happens at that particular point?
Well, that's certainly predicting the future. I can, I can tell you that the Jackson County order is, is much like the one that was entered in St. Louis. It's been the subject of the litigation over there. And in St. Louis County, the health department there and the county executive took the position that the 30-day limit that's in this new state law that we're talking about doesn't actually apply because that state law only covers actual closures or indirect closures of facilities as opposed to mitigation measures like what we're talking about. And that's one of the issues that's going to get ironed out in that litigation. The judge over there entered a TRO prohibiting the health director from enforcing that mask mandate, but only until August 17, when they're going to have a hearing, when they're going to take up some of these deeper issues such as what applies. The situation there is that the county council entered an order trying to override the health director's order. And the judge said, people are legitimately confused as to which one applies. So she's going to stop the mask mandate temporarily while they sort through these issues. But one of the questions is whether a mitigation measure, such as a mask mandate is in fact limited to 30 days or whether it can be entered for a longer period of time. Certainly, I think even under the most generous reading of that law, for instance, the, the- the county council there, county legislature in Jackson County, could enter an order extending that mask mandate. That's certainly my understanding, even under, I think, the Attorney General's interpretation of that law.
And then the follow-up question to that would be, is there anything, even if the Jackson County Health Department would, for example, decide to not extend a mask mandate or anything like that, is there anything that limits the school district one way or the other?
No. No, I think you always have the authority to take into account your own circumstances, what you're seeing in your environment. Having a health department behind you with the statistics certainly helps. But I think under Missouri law, you have the authority to make the best decisions you as a board think are necessary for the protection of your students and staff.
Okay, I'm done. So I appreciate both of you being here sincerely. Board member Sparks?
I actually have questions for the administration. And so I was under the impression that we were supposed to ask our guests questions and then allow them to leave and then-
That's-
I just wanted to-
So I'll come back to you?
Yes, please.
Okay, absolutely. Anybody have any other questions for the Health Department?
One.
Sorry, Board Member Allen, go ahead.
Thanks, sir. Just a quick question, or maybe two. Do we have a count, I guess, or statistics to know how many kids or age groups are hospitalized? Is that what the one slide is to indicate, slide number 15? Cumulative cases, those aren't hospitalization cases, those are just cases of diagnosis, correct?
Yeah, so I don't think in the presentation we included any data on hospitalizations in youth, but that is certainly data that, you know, we have, we can pull it together.
I mean, do we know what those are? We don't know what those are off the top.
Not off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
All right. And then, this emotional recognition, social interaction, those kinds of considerations, it's a balance, and it's a discussion around, you know, one versus the other. And President Murdoch, it's a tremendous question, risk versus reward, I guess. Are there considerations for taking a mask off during the day for a period of time? Obviously, when you're outside, you're saying kids can, every other kid for a little while. I mean, I'm just curious if there are ways to take into account emotional recognition, right? Social interaction, some of those things that may be limited during the day? If somebody has a mask on the entire day?
Yeah, so I mean, I think like the body of evidence that we have, there's really no, there's really no data on that. There's really no, there's really nothing that we could rely on with scientific support that would say like, yes, this is the thing to do, this is not the thing to do. Just because a lot of the studies are focusing on, you know, masking across a community or masking in a particular group of people. And it's centered on the control of that particular variable. And, you know, it's exercising masking to the greatest extent possible. We know it's not perfect, we know that, you know, masking is not going to be perfect. But it's an overwhelming majority of individuals partaking in the activity. And so, I just couldn't necessarily speculate, I guess, on what would be the appropriate response in that vein, so to speak. You know, I think we have the CDC, the CDC is quite clear, we have the American Academy of Pediatrics, we have a lot of recommendations, Children's Mercy, that are explicit as far as what the recommendations are. We just don't have anything that really differentiates between activities.
All right, just thought I'd ask, I appreciate that. I mean, okay, thank you, thanks for being here.
Board member Sparks?
You are the health professional, so I thought I would ask one question. It is very clear, though, that if we as a community choose not to wear a mask, then most likely, our kids would not be able to stay in school with the data that we currently have. The question that I'm asking the health professionals is, it is very clear, though, with the data that we currently have, is if we choose not to mask our students, then most likely we will not be able to keep them in school.
I think that if we choose to do nothing, so that's really, you know, the option is not to address the situation. You know, I couldn't even necessarily speculate what the burden on the healthcare system would be and how that would cascade down into other subsectors. You know, it would be a very difficult position to be in, because we would have to make substantial choices between access to healthcare and kids being in school and a whole host of other challenges that we do not want to, that we do not want to face again. And I'll say that I do not want to, I don't want to go down that road again. So, I think this is our best bet to avoid all of that in the least intrusive way we possibly can.
Any other questions for the Health Department? And then we'll do a discussion, obviously, with administration and members. Okay. I think we, yeah, if you guys feel free to-
Thank you all for your time, sir.
Not be here all evening with us, so thank you.
Dr. Miller, do you mind stepping up to the mic and talking a little bit about some of the safe return? And I'm going to walk these two out.
Okay.
Thank you. You know, last spring, we worked to revise our safe return in-person document. So we actually visited with a group of stakeholders in the community to update that document. And we know the circumstances from June to where we are right now have greatly changed. So one of the things we plan to do, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with our building administration. And so again, on a routine basis, and we know that we need to do this as circumstances change, we will be working with our building principals. And one of the things about this document that I think is important for our community to be aware of, it requires the input of operational leaders, instructional leaders. Everybody has to have eyes on in regards to their specific area of expertise, so that it's a largely contributed document by several administrators. Again, we want to make sure that building principals have clear direction, what that means from a building level perspective. So that's an ongoing discussion that we plan to have as things continue to morph and evolve. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So, what I would like to do, board members here, to make sure that we are following the agenda appropriately here, is go ahead and do the motion, a motion, and then we can have discussion. And then either it passes or it doesn't. But that's really where we need to be as we start asking questions and have discussion among administration and members. And we have it broken down, as you probably saw in your packet, it is in two motions. So, 2.01 is in regards to masks, and 2.02 is in regards to when we would reevaluate any decision should 2.1, 2.01 pass. Board member Campbell, did you have a question regarding that?
I do, because I'm not sure, and I'm just asking, that we got down to the slides with, I know we got to the end of the Jackson County, I think there are a few more slides.
Well, we have the Kansas City ones that if we want to, is that what you're talking about?
No, slide 36 and 37.
With the legal and on 38 and that kind of thing?
37 is the last one with the superintendent recommendation.
Right, so, we did end up, I mean, we can have Dr. Buck, if you would like, go over that here in just a second, if you'd like to wait for him on that. But at the same time, we actually could, even if you would want to do that, we could actually do a motion and then even do those last couple of slides, too, if you want. But now that he's back, we'll have him-
Perfect timing.
We'll have him go and address those last. Can you address the last two slides in the presentation?
So are you talking about starting here?
Well, you can if you want to start in Kansas City, but-
All right, so Kansas City Health Department does have a mandate that starts Monday. We do have one elementary building in that area, and that's Summit Point Elementary. So we will have to comply, actually, I'm sorry, it started last Monday. And now we do, since the slide was created, Jackson County does have one starting at 8:00 and 9:21, so we must comply, so it includes the rest of our facility. So we do already have a mask mandate for all people indoors in our school facilities. So, it makes this vote a little bit different in that respect, as far as starting it with a mask requirement, if you will. Kansas City Health Department shared this data with us this week. So I'm not going to speak to it, but just show it, here's their cases. When you're looking at positivity rates, new cases per week, they're seeing the same types of increases as Jackson County is. So, here's how many tests are given, they're giving more tests, yet their percent positivity rate goes up, that's usually the mix. Just explain a few differences this year compared to last. You already heard Joe Hatley talk a little bit about the new law and how long an order can last. But two things, we had AMIX last year, so it was statewide. You could move to shutting down a building or a district and move to virtual if cases got too high or quarantines got too high. And we kind of had that 20% of our buildings in quarantine level, if you will. And so, that is no longer there. So if we get a really high level of quarantines, we are still in person at this point. So, when you are quarantined, it is a medical homebound, that has always existed. And there's three different ways we can address that. We can, we've gotten permission from the state, so we have those AMI days, those alternative method of instructions for snow days, if you will, does include this as well. So we could have up to five days that we could move to virtual, but that's the max we can, as it currently sits with the state. So just showing you, there's a little bit difference in the levers you have as a district going forward. The CDC, AAP, the Kansas City Medical Society, Jackson County Health Department, Kansas City Health Department, Children's Mercy, our local medical panel, and many, many doctors who have reached out over the last week, all recommend universal mask wearing indoors for school. I haven't had one medical doctor, and I haven't had one medical association say don't. And as board members, you're elected officials, so you're invited to the Kansas City Chamber meeting with chief medical officers tomorrow. The chief medical officer is also recommended a couple of weeks ago for universal mask wearing indoors for schools. So with that, it's kind of hard to go against all the experts who live it, epidemiologists, doctors, chief medical officers. So my recommendation was to have universal mask wearing. Then, of course, the order came out, so that part is a little bit moot. So I think Ryan and Megan worked on a recommendation, you see 2.01 and 2.02. So it's two different recommendations now. The first one on moving to a mask, universal mask mandate, and the second one is when to reevaluate it. So I'll open up for questions for me or administration, as you have them. I do want to add, earlier you were asking about research on if you're wearing masks and in close contact and testing positive. So CDC did come into St. Louis region, I think includes St. Charles County, as well as Springfield region, and did a two-week study, intense study, and that was released on March 26, 2021, on their weekly morbidity and mortality weekly report, MMWR, about that study. And it showed that 2%, if everyone's wearing masks, only 2% of close contacts tested positive, which is much lower than the percent rate in the outer community in the same study time.
All right, thank you for summarizing here, right here at the end on the presentation. So now, board members, I would entertain that motion, then we'll get into discussion. And just so you guys know, I'm going to trip all your buttons back off so that I know actually who has questions and stuff as we go forward, okay? So wait till after we get done with the motion here, so, okay? So, we do need a motion, and like I mentioned to all of you, we did break this into two, because we needed to discuss when we would reevaluate the motion, and we can talk about that here in just a second. So we need a motion for 2.01.
I move that the Board of Education mandate universal mask while indoors at all LSR 7 facilities beginning August 9, 2021.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for 2.01. Now we can get into any questions that you might have. So, only because I know he had pushed it even prior, Dr. Hedrick, so Board member Sparks?
Thank you, President Murdoch. I know that we've had a lot of talk about the health concerns of wearing masks, not wearing masks. The concern that I believe that all of us as board members for education are concerned about is what would the learning gap be if our students are not in school learning? And so I would like to hear from the administration, Dr. Buck, or whoever you would like to delegate that answer to, that question to.
So, I'll share this. I had a parent talk to me in May, whose child had three different quarantines during the school year, and another three times ended up turning positive. So that's six weeks of school, that they were doing virtual while their classmates were in person, because it was an older kid, so he usually didn't have whole classes go out. But they were wearing masks. So if this new quarantine rule were in place last year, they would have had zero days, they would have been quarantined. And so I think by having masks on means we have a higher rate of kids in person with the quarantine rules, which we do not have discretion on. So it is very advantageous to have the mask requirement, thus we'll have more kids in person.
Just as a follow-up, so would we clearly state that kids not being in the classroom, not having the instruction from a educator, it is hurting a student and their learning ability?
I think the data is clear nationwide that in-person learning is preferred and has a higher impact. Teachers matter.
Thank you.
Board member Hedrick?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. And one, hopefully, and I really didn't think about this until our visitors were talking, but do we have any data from last school year in terms of the contact tracing that we did and being able to trace any cases back to ridership on the buses?
I know first semester, I don't think we had any transmission that I know of on buses. I don't know about second semester. Kristi Barger may know that answer, and it's probably going to be somewhat of a guess for her. First semester really was, we had one particular building, we had special programs throughout the district, and then we had winter sports teams, so it's very much the first semester.
I can't give the statistics, I can tell anecdotally that I was part of a contact tracing situation in which there were multiple positives on a bus, but there was difficulty in ascertaining, because there were siblings, there were classes together. And so I don't know that we could attribute it back directly to the bus. But that is where the contact tracing started in that particular incident.
Okay, thank you. Just in terms of the quarantine issue, and I know I brought this up last year, but I really am concerned for students who have to be in quarantine, what their education day looks like. And I think we need to continue to make sure that they have the best experience possible, because being out of the classroom, if it's 10 days or 14 days or whatever it is, that's too many days for them to be out of the classroom. So, I don't know if we've done things technology-wise that can help with that, but I do think that is something that we need to really get identified in terms of being able to provide a very similar education for those students during that period of time. So that's, I, you know, that's-
You got a thumbs up, so.
Mm-hmm, me too.
Well, and I guess my next point would be, I think we also need to look at every strategy, mitigation strategy that we can to keep our students, get our students in the classroom, and keep our students and our staff and our teachers safe, as safe as we possibly can. So if that means, you know, whatever that means, I don't, you know, trying to social distance more, whatever. I think we need to look at every option that we possibly can. And then my last question really, that's a question is, does this motion mean that on the playground there would be, masks would be optional? Okay, I just want to clarify, thank you.
Board member Allen?
Thank you. A few questions. And Dr. Buck, I think you talk faster than I do, and I didn't think many people did that. So, that being said, will you roll back a little bit to discuss this AMI days, these AMI days, individual versus group, so to speak, and AMIX days? And what that does to Dr. Hedrick's point about kids being at home in quarantine? And what their available, what their available resource is to be in class as best they can? And then I have a number of other questions, but I really want to drill down on that, because I had a discussion with another school board member in a different district, that that somewhat, it's a challenge, flat out, so enlighten me.
So we had one building have this happen twice, where they had 20, over 20% of their population was in quarantine or isolation. And that was very difficult, then if you had three kids in person and 17 kids at home, how do you do both at the same time as the teacher? So at that point, we moved that whole, and plus there was transmission happening within that building. So both times, we took a two-week break and moved it entirely virtual. And we came back, we were very successful. Several months later, we had it happen again, took a two-week break, came back, and were very successful. So, it is probably harder instructionally when you have half-class in virtual, half-class not, than anything else. And so that was our ability last year, that is not going to be our ability this year.
It is not our ability, so how do we address that?
So we can use up, we can save our snow days, those five AMI days, where we can forgive snow and do virtual. We can not do that and save them for emergencies and situations, but it won't be two weeks. We can not do that and save them for emergencies and situations, but it won't be two weeks. So we could try to make three-day weekends or something like that. And then after that, we're just going to have to, you know, to use the homebound method. And the homebound method has three variables. One, if we have the staffing available, but when we were hitting the fan in November, we didn't nearly have a staff for this, do five hours of direct instruction. Two, zoom in somebody in or Google Meet someone into the actual class and they participate in class virtually. We had some huge success stories in places there. Continue to grow, it certainly isn't universal. And then three would be more of that AMI look of a day where they are given assignments and it's asynchronous, just like our online students had was asynchronous.
Substitutes and all the consideration for some of those things and what, I mean, granted, that's still dollars in budget, maybe non-allocated, who knows?
Yep, so September and October, our sub-fill rate was still in the mid 90s. We hit November, we dropped below 70% fill rate. So we also had a hard time just having the staff just even supervise alone instruct students last November. Because of quarantines and isolations, not only within our staff, but also within the sub-staff.
Last year, it seems like we were very successful with our employees being vaccinated. What's our rate?
So it's voluntary for them to tell us, but I can tell you, we hosted clinics. And based on that, or people telling us, we don't need the clinics, we already got our vaccination, we were over 90% last year. Vaccination rate amongst our staff.
Huge number.
Yes.
A little bit of a tangent here, but what percent of our, what percentage of our student population, I realize it's difficult because you'll have higher rates in different settings, but generally speaking, what's our percent of students who have medically fragile conditions? Who would be much more susceptible? I know, it's, yeah, nice, I know, I see your facial expression even with a mask on, but it's a hard one because obviously we'll have much more delicate situation in certain classrooms than we will with others. But there's, you know, consideration to where we may be able to mitigate risk with a mask for those who may be medically fragile.
Correct, we have them throughout the district, I do not have a number off the top of my head, sorry, Mike.
That's fine, I'm just curious. And don't take this, Mike, I was not wearing a mask thing as some political statement. I just didn't put one on, everybody else has masks, I have my vaccines, okay? So I'm sure somebody's out there going, well, he's not wearing a mask, he must be in favor of blah, blah, blah. So don't take it more than what it is. I haven't had my mask here, I'm just too lazy to put it on and after I put it on, then it becomes another whole story. But one other question. Talk about our process of and what we've done to ramp up our HVAC systems, for example, or materials for cleaning or sanitation, sanitizing, I should say.
Kyle or Emily, which one of you want to come up here? I can tell you that Kyle has a double filter system, which is probably above and beyond what most places do, so.
Because they talk about layering and that's very intriguing and sounds very successful. So I'm curious where we are in that.
Okay, with HVAC, our current systems meet the ASHRAE 62.1 standards for outside air. So that gives us ventilation rates that meet industry standards. We do, you know, what we can with filtration. We have many different types of systems, so I can't give you categorical statements on how air is filtered. But we do, we use MERV 8 and MERV 11 filters in our units that provide good airflow. There is a balance, and we've communicated this and educated in the past. There's a careful balance between filtration and ventilation. With current units, the more you filter, the less you ventilate because it restricts airflow. So we're always trying to make sure that we have that right balance, giving people the right amount of outdoor air changes while still filtering the air effectively. Outside air is an important, important component because that's when you're truly exchanging and bringing fresh air into the space. We're very fortunate in the district to have a district-wide control system and we can very responsively adjust outside air levels in our units. Within probably just a few hours' time, get all the units in the districts, the district adjusted. So for example, last year, we had a period of time where we doubled outside air ventilation rates and kept it that way for a long time and monitored space temps to make sure that we were able to maintain temperatures. Is that okay on filtration?
Yeah, I'm just curious, sanitizers, I mean, talking to a doctor Wednesday, I think. His point was masks do what they do, but hands to the mouth, hands to the eyes, washing, hand sanitizer. I mean, those are huge mitigators, they're huge risk reducers. So are we stocked full, are we able to do those things? And then I have one more question and I'll be quiet, Mr. President.
We may want to have Krista come up and talk about what she has over there. She is definitely well-stocked and then if you want, Terry can also talk about the education pieces they do in hand washing.
While she's coming up, I just want to ask another question and that is, we have choir rooms in elementary schools. We have choir rooms in the high schools. I'm sure in the high school, middle school, we can space a little bit better maybe than in elementary. What is it, 200 kids in there a week or whatever? I mean, those are high numbers of kids, higher than you may be able to space in a classroom. Cafeterias, band rooms, you know, Trump has spit valves for a reason, right? So we're going to have band. I mean, those are issues that are pretty big issues with a large number of kids moving through those spaces. Buses, cafeterias, libraries, especially buses and cafeterias that we don't have so much space.
What was nice as far as cafeterias last year is I don't think we had one transmission that we could go back to what's happening cafeteria. I don't know, it's because you're not exerting yourself while you're eating, I don't know. You're not co-mingling, you're sitting in one spot. But we did have band and choir successfully last year, we're going to try to do the same thing this year. I realize last year was alpha and this is delta variant, so we'll monitor, but we're going in with very similar strategies we had last year.
So regarding sanitation, cleaning and disinfecting, we are prepared to maintain the same procedures that we had last year. And that is fully cleaning and sanitizing all touch surfaces every single day. And so, you know, there's a, there's a strong push by Children's Mercy. We've been in very close contact with them to promote cleaning with more soap and water. They've done some testing and feel that the mechanical action of scrubbing with soap and water, even on surfaces, just like it does with your hands, that that breaks down pathogens and does a good job. And so we're looking at all options and we'll continue the procedures that we had last year. I'll let Krista answer the supply question.
Well, I would say that we're in a much better position than we were at this time last year. We are fully stocked, we have all of the same supplies that we had that were approved by our risk manager and the nursing staff and everyone else. And so I think we're in a good spot. We've got plenty of everything and we've even had some donations by local companies that have provided us with some personalized hand sanitizers to hand out to everyone for the start of school. So we're in a good spot.
Could I, could I ask a follow-up question to the ventilation while he's, while Kyle's still up here, please? So in your opinion, any kind of a portable device that would be in the classroom for cleaning air, moving air, whatever, not needed, that's something we should be moving towards? What's your professional opinion regarding that topic?
We, we've done a lot of research on portable devices and without getting into a lot of detail, the first thing you have to ask you, you're looking for the effectiveness of it. How much air can it move, how big of a unit is it? And so how truly is it effective at cleaning an entire volume of air in a space? And to, we looked at some units, to size units, to do an effective job of turning over and cleaning the air in the room. They turn out being really large units. The small little units you see, the desktop-type things, they, in my opinion, have a very low rate of effectiveness when it comes to treating an entire classroom's worth of air. And so it, you know, if you're going to do something, you just want to know that it's really going to make a difference. And those little small units don't really turn out the CFM, that makes a huge difference. So some of the larger changes that people try are more system-related.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Board Member Campbell.
So I appreciate the questions, Board Member Hendricks, Board Member Allen. Again, focusing on this multi-layered approach. So it's not just, although our decision tonight, our motion, is around masking, we clearly are seeing across our district, all of the layers of protection that we are continuing and adding to and putting in place to ensure the safety of our students and our staff, to ensure that we can keep kids in school and learning in school. We heard from Dr. Miller, operational leaders, instructional leaders are engaged. People are going to be meeting ongoing to make sure that we've got actions taken that are flexible with the coming waves of what may be coming, all true statements, right? I think one thing that was touched on, maybe that we haven't touched on, and Dr. Buck, I'd like to ask you and your staff, is the social emotional part. We heard a lot about that last year, about how we were helping our students with the challenge of wearing masks, with the challenge of living in a pandemic. So can we speak a little bit to that for our parents and folks that are watching?
So we just had our, and Krista, you can come up and add on to this if you want. We just had our district leadership meeting last week and we had a guest speaker come, a medical, a doctor who now works for Blue Valley School District, who focuses on mental health and talked about the metrics increasing over the last 20 years. And the pandemic just added a little bit of steroids to that. That's something we've been concerned about even going into the pandemic and it continues to be something we're concerned about. So as we continue, we look at not only what we're doing now, but we're also looking at an RFP for a medical clinic for students only and provide more resources as far as that goes. We went out for one last year and didn't get responses because everyone's so shorthanded staff-wise now. That's probably the biggest challenge for us. It's also a challenge in the nursing world, you know, Terry's going to give a big shake there. So we're going to continue to work with that. Anecdotally, we saw some people thrive being, and being online. We saw some people who really struggled being online. You know, that was the interesting piece to that for some parents. Some parents would have one kid who did better online and one kid who did worse online in the same household. So we definitely want people in person though, the majority, the vast majority of kids do better in person and that's why we're offering that. But we still have online as an option. I think we have a little over 160 kids, something like that. Somewhere in the mid-hundreds of our kids have chosen to be online all day at the elementary level. But it's much lower than it was last year, we're almost 20% starting the year online. But for some families and some kids, that is the preferred method and they felt like they were successful last year. So we're going to continue to offer that. In fact, we're approved by the state, we're only about eight or nine providers in the entire, that are offered to the entire state. So kids in other districts can choose our online elementary now. So there isn't very many choices actually for elementary. Majority of those providers only do secondary. So actually, we'll probably be educating kids all across the state of Missouri with our online piece. Again, we know that for few people, that is the better option, but the vast majority, the better option's in person.
Great, and thanks for overviewing that. So I hear that we've got social emotional pieces in place. We've got work that'll help all the kids that are going to be here in person. We've got a choice for the people, the students that want to continue with online, that's an option as well. Excellent, that's great, thank you.
Board Member Hedrick.
Yeah, I'm just going to go back and I'm really not trying to be a pain, but I am really concerned about our students who are in quarantine. And five hours of homebound instruction in my book is not sufficient. And really, when you think about all of the long-term impacts, and this is not going to be the last pandemic we deal with, we need to get this figured out. In today's age of technology, we need to get this figured out for the kids who can't be in the classroom.
Good. Board Member Fritchy.
Yes, I would second what Judy just said because that's one of my main concerns too. Our kids who do have to quarantine and we will have those kiddos who will have to quarantine. And, you know, I know that we always say we're going to, we're going to do our best, we're going to do our best. But, you know, I, last year, we talked about the possibilities of Google Meets and some people said, well, some classes you can, some classes you can't. But if we have the majority of our kids in class, the majority of our teachers teaching and we prioritize in school instruction, I just really think that, I don't see the problem in most cases of having the teacher's computer on and a Google Meet going unless they have to be using their computer for another function at the same time. You know what I'm saying? So I don't know what other things that you guys have planned. Dr. Buck, do you have other, other things planned to help the kids?
So we continue to work that all year long and the rate of Google Meets or Zoom-ins increased throughout the year and then we're going to continue to do that. I can tell you with this mask quarantine, wearing masks in a quarantine change, if we have a mask requirement, our quarantines are going to be very minimal, which is a game changer compared to what we had last year.
Good, good. Okay, my second, my second comment and question that goes along with that. First of all, we've received hundreds of emails from, out there from folks weighing in on this issue. And many of our emails, well, several came from actually medical personnel who all have encouraged us, all of those medical personnel who are not on our medical panel. These are other physicians and nurses, et cetera, who have encouraged us to make sure and mask our children because they too are seeing the overwhelming effects of what's going on. In addition to that though, there are your parents who really want to know, how's this school year perhaps going to look different than last school year in terms of school activities, field trips, concerts? Things that parents traditionally love to come to attend, to see their kids in action and they really weren't able to, we weren't able to fully do that last year. Is, how's the school year going to look different for us?
So last year, the order included gathering size and such, it does not include that this year. So we're going to try to make schools normal as possible. Our kind of guiding focus is can we do contact tracing? So we'll have, you know, meet the teacher nights and everything else, but we're probably not going to put everybody into a giant assembly format, have all the parents come into the gym and talk to them before they go to the classroom because it's hard to contact trace. So that's going to be our guiding principle. We're going to go back to as many normal things as possible because there's not any event size pieces on there. And I'm glad you mentioned the medical panel, so just let you know, when we visited with them this week, they're saying, they're telling us they're seeing more young and under 12 even kids being taken by ambulance to the emergency room for respiratory issues because of COVID cases than they did. The last year, that was just unheard of during summer and they're seeing them this summer. So they were very adamant, and they wouldn't want me to pass this along to you, so I am. They're very adamant, you should do a mask requirement in their medical opinion.
Thank you.
Board Member Sparks.
I know so often we get to hear from Dr. Buck at the administration, but I don't believe that we give Dr. Buck the kudos that he deserves with leading our district. We don't have a small district, we have a large amount of staff that he has to manage. And I'm not here to micromanage Dr. Buck. That's not what I was elected to do. However, I was elected to make sure that all of our kids are safe. And so I first want to say thank you, Dr. Buck, for what you're doing, continue to lead this district. And I'm behind you 100% to make sure all of our students remain safe and our staff. I am a parent first and so just as many of our other parents want to be at football games, track and field and all of those other events, I want to be there too. But I don't want to be there at the risk of hurting someone or someone hurting my child through this delta variant. And so I'm encouraging you to continue to lead, but also lead out front by making sure that all of our kids and staff are safe. Thank you.
Board Member Campbell, did you have another question you could?
I did just want to, I'll follow that remark, Board Member Sparks, because I agree. I think for all of us as board members, we definitely. we definitely have the focus on our students and our staff and their safety and their education. And knowing that the weight of 17,604 students, current enrollment, right, as of yesterday morning, 250 young learners at great beginnings, knowing the weight of that is on your shoulders, Dr. Buck, and we back you around that, I think is really telling. As a parent, I have two. And sometimes the weight of being a parent of two is heavy, but the weight of decisions around the safety and the education of our students and having students in person is just really critical to the success of this school year. So, again, I'll second that. Thank you, Dr. Buck.
I would do that too, but I actually have two more really fast questions. I apologize. When we're contact tracing as a district, and we get the, "I'm not sure if they were a contact or not," do we quarantine or not?
We engage the Jackson County Health Department. We break out, if it's on a football field, we break out video. And just in the last eight hours, we were involved with the Jackson County Health Department on a question where we had a clear quarantine on a few kids, and we had questions on more. And they worked, because it's their rules. We're trying to follow their rules, and sometimes there's, it's surprising how often Terry and Christie will say this because they were hot and heavy with it last year as well, how many times there's a new situation that we hadn't seen before. So, there's many people over at the Jackson County Health Department that we interact with quite a bit. And like I said, when there's video, we use video quite a bit as well.
So, on a 50-50 case, it becomes their call, right? I mean, ultimately...
If it's not clear-cut and we can't tell, we engage them. And I wouldn't say which way or other. It depends on each case, case by case.
Okay. And then my second one is, if a student is required to quarantine this year, but let's say chooses to not engage in homebound, right? So, they're just going to accept a 14-day quarantine. What kind of attendance issue does that present for either us as a district or the student as an individual?
If they do not complete, homebound is considered an absence.
So, my follow-up to that is going to be, we just said that it could be difficult for us to staff homebound, right? So, what if...
It would be difficult to staff the first of three options the state given us for homebound, and that's the five hours. And small numbers, it's not. But when we had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids quarantined, there's no way we could have got enough staff to go do that because we were short-staffed in the buildings at the same time too. We didn't have enough subs. So, that's, the state has given us three different options if you're considered homebound. Only the first one is that five-hour piece. And then, you know, so for some kids, you think about it. If you have needs that are more severe or you have a situation where they have a hard time to have an access or they're too young and they can't, there might be some situations where that makes the most sense. Majority is going to be either we Zoom-in or it's going to be treated like AMI and asynchronous, one of those two pieces.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification. I do. Board member Allen?
Thank you, sir. Man, you caught me. I was thinking of your conversation over there. But one of the things that maybe I want to reiterate from Rodrick Sparks over there is the fact that we do receive a ton of emails and letters from doctors, medical practitioners, the like. One thing I'd like for you to do, if you would, is give us some, kind of unpack this letter from the Kansas City Medical Society that's part of our packet. Maybe throw that up on the screen, what that group does and who it is and that kind of stuff as well. "I don't have study in epidemiology. I'm not an M.D. Our role is education." I'm not even, quite frankly, not the biggest fan of even having to take this vote. But we're elected officials, we got to vote. But leaning on medical professionals or Jackson County Health Department, I can't fly in the face of what they're saying. It seems to me that medically and physicians that are behind the information, our role is to deem what is medically consistent and get as many kids in the classroom as possible. Not to interpret some sort of political issue, some hidden agenda, which just astounds me. I wouldn't have time for that, but unpack this letter a little bit. Tell me about that, and thank you for your input.
So, the Kansas City Medical Society, I believe it was 200 doctors that signed off on this, if I remember right. I'm sorry, I can't put it up because it's not attached to my computer, the presentation up there. One of the authors of it is a local doctor. Every single doctor has reached out to us as well as on our medical panels or in agreement with what you're seeing in front of you. Every chief medical officer two weeks ago, and I'm sure you're going to hear it again tomorrow, is going to say this. And what is interesting about this first vote is regardless if you vote yes or not, we have to comply with the mandate. So, we have a mandate already for Summit Point Elementary, and as of Monday, we'll have a mandate for the rest of the district. So, we will have universal masking next week throughout the district, regardless if you vote for this or not, because we have to. When we put this agenda item, we didn't know there was going to be a mask mandate. That was announced, I think I got notified at 3:00, and it came out at 4:00 as a press release. So, 3:00 PM yesterday is when I was notified we're going to have a mandate. But yes, every health professional is saying they're seeing more cases, younger cases. ICU beds in the state are over 600. The last time it was, the high point in the winter was at 650 beds of ICU, I think, filled in the state. We have hospitals no longer taking transfers from outside of the area. They are taxed, and they also have staff members that they lose who quarantines in situations like this. So, it is, the hospitals have definitely, we've met with them throughout the year. It is definitely an urgency to last three, four weeks compared to what we'd heard before from them.
Any other comments or questions? Oh, it was hidden behind my computer. I apologize. Board member Campbell?
No worries. Something you mentioned, board member Allen, reminded me of a question that I had ahead of the meeting. And I appreciated Mr. Hattley, you running through some of the legal concepts around masks, around our decision-making. A question had come up about closed meetings. And so, I wanted to just kind of review with you the difference for us as board members of what a closed meeting means and what can be discussed in a closed meeting.
Well, that's all governed by the Missouri Sunshine Law. And the Sunshine Law generally requires that your meetings and your business be conducted in the open and public. But there are 20-some exemptions under the Sunshine Law that allow you to go into closed session. The most common ones are for legal advice to discuss litigation, personnel issues, student matters that you have to deal with. And to go into closed session, there needs to be a proper motion with the language reciting the basis for it, roll call, vote. And then, once in the closed session, you're limited to discussing the matters that are within the scope of the closed-session motion.
So, for example, this mass discussion that we're having, this is an open session, and it's discussed in the open so that the public can hear all the discussion and be listening to everything that is brought up. Closed session is different, and that's defined by Missouri law, not by Kathy Campbell or anybody else.
Right, so for instance, if the school district were to be sued over some action and you wanted to get legal advice, we would probably do that in a closed session. But the general discussion tonight about a policy measure, which is ultimately what this is, is an appropriate thing for an open session and an open meeting.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your review on that. And we have training that helps us know that. When we become a board member, we go through training that helps us know that difference and what can be discussed. But I think it's important for people across our district to really understand what that means as well. Thank you.
I'm going to jump in real quick. Joe, don't go anywhere. So, essentially, if we were to take this mass discussion into closed session, you would call us to the car and say, "That's open meeting discussion," correct? Because generally, yes. Unless it happens to affect personnel, real estate discussions, dollars and manipulation of real estate and/or legal issue, correct?
Right.
Basically, those three.
Right, for instance, if someone wanted to get a detailed legal opinion, for instance, on some aspect of it that I felt would be more appropriately addressed in a closed session, I would tell you that. There were a few questions tonight that came up that, or I was asked legally, for instance, "How long can the order remain in effect?" And I think that's simply a matter of what the statutes say and what the courts in St. Louis are dealing with. And I didn't have any problem discussing that and telling you that openly because I think it's important for people to know because there has been, in my view anyway, some inaccuracies in what's been out there in terms of what that law does, what it covers, and how it's being applied over on the other side of the state. So, I think it's important for people to understand what it does and what it doesn't do.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions on 2.01? Board member Sparks?
Sorry, just for in the spirit of transparency, what are the ways that the community get to engage? So, we kind of just talked about what are the things that we as a board know between a work session, a board meeting, and obviously, closed session? But what are the ways that the community get to engage with the board when decisions are coming down? And then also, how is the community told about the things that we're talking about in work session like this open format? And again, I know the answer. I just think that it's good for the spirit of transparency that we talk about.
I think you were kind of asking yourself the question there. Sorry, I couldn't help it. So, yes, so obviously, there's a link to contact us on our website, and you guys get a lot of those emails. I think I had a couple hundred on this topic. I think you guys probably had similar because I get, I'm a different link on there. And as well as you get your regular emails. So, we get quite a bit of that. Linda is your board secretary, so she gets calls on your behalf and portrays things to you as well. So, yes, there is many ways to engage you.
Obviously, the meeting notices are how they know when we're going to. I apologize, yes, yes. So, then, you know, a work session slash special session obviously is just a little different in that we don't have public comment in a session like this, whereas typically, we would have public comment that we would allow as well. I think a lot of us probably get a lot of phone calls too in regards to this, which is perfectly acceptable as well. Preferably not at midnight or something like that, but... And then, the agendas and stuff that everybody are able to get a hold of as well.
And then Linda works on the minutes of it and sends them out to you and posts them off pretty darn quickly after that. And if there's any decisions, Katie Bergen and her department send a mass communication out to everyone.
Okay, any other questions or comments? 2.01. Ms. Ismer, could we get a roll call vote, please?
Board member Allen?
Aye.
Board member Campbell?
Aye.
Board member Fritchy?
Aye.
Board member Hendrick?
Aye.
Vice President Marshall?
Aye.
Board member Sparks?
Aye.
President Murdock?
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. 2.02, and for board members, this is where one of the things that we need to do is make a decision, since it's a 30-day county order. By us passing 2.01, we need to decide as a group when we will reevaluate the decision. Keeping in mind that even though you might see this motion that is here, and we can have this discussion if you'd like. And we talked about it as Dr. Buck, Vice President Marshall and I, that it could be evaluated, or if something should come up sooner even than what is listed in the motion, we certainly would have the flexibility to call a special session if necessary to address any all-of-a-sudden kind of immediate information, whether that be maybe the CDC, Jackson County Health Department, that kind of thing, changing either a mandate or guidance principle that's going on. So, I just want to make sure that you understand that what is here in the motion was kind of our way of trying to give some stability to the district and then understanding that if we needed to go a little quicker even in the future, we could. So, I would entertain a motion on that before we do any other discussion. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page with that one.
I move to reevaluate the LSR-7 mask mandate prior to the beginning of the second quarter.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second for 2.02 on the reevaluation of the LSR-7 mask mandate prior to the second quarter. Is there any discussion on this item? Board member Campbell?
I just have a question, and I probably should know this off the top of my head. I don't.
October 22nd.
Thank you. What is it, wait, what was it?
Octo, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have cut you off there.
No, no.
I knew where you were. October...
You were reading my mind, that's awesome.
October 22nd. And one of the things, by the way, just so everyone is aware, that ended up becoming kind of a breakpoint for us because we have a board meeting on October the 21st as well. So, we have a couple of board meetings prior to that. So, if we needed to have any discussion, reevaluation, that kind of thing, that kind of fell in line with that as well. Board member Sparks? Did you have anything or did you? Okay. Board member Hendrick?
So, that decision in terms of impacting what families decide for education for their students, how would that, us making a decision at that time, affect their ability to maybe move to online? If we would change mask and, you know, mandate, and there are families that want to continue that? So, I just want to curious about that question.
Great question. So, we at any time probably can accommodate almost every request to move from in-person to online. We might need some staffing and some time sometimes to do that. Going online to in-person, we kind of came to a spot second semester where we had every single day, and it was tough because every day you had a new kid and basically you're saying hi to, and I'm looking at Heather Kenny as an elementary principal. It was really an elementary issue. And so, we kind of clumped that into every other week, I think it was, every other Monday. And we did it based on if we had space. So, we had a waiting list for a little while, then it got cleared out because we got enough space for kids to come back in person. So, we started the year last year with about 20% online. I think we ended up less than 14% at the end of the year. So, we had a migration overall of about 6%, more than 6% of our students moving back to in-person. But we did have some going the opposite direction, going in-person to online. And I think, correct me wrong, Katie, if tomorrow, there's going to be an announcement in the morning with whatever decision's made tonight saying if you want to change your status, we're going to open that back up in a certain way. I don't know how, so Katie will explain it in there. And try to ask for that to be done before the end of the day Tuesday so then we can make staffing changes. So, there'll be a chance to change status of in-person or online, if you will.
Well, and I think if we need to clearly articulate what happens during the rest of the school year as well in that communication.
Katie would agree with you.
Any other questions or comments related to 2.02? Ms. Ismer, could we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Board member Campbell?
Aye.
Board member Fritchy?
Aye.
Board member Hendrick?
Aye.
Vice President Marshall?
Aye.
Board member Sparks?
Aye.
Board member Allen?
Aye.
President Murdock?
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. The remaining three items tonight for board members, these are going to be just our discussion items. And I would ask us, obviously, to just kind of keep these things relatively brief, if possible. The first item, 3.01, is going back over the conference recap. Some of you had mentioned to hear just a little bit more about some of the sessions that people attended. But again, I would ask that we keep those decisions brief, if possible. Give her a moment. Okay, so, we will, I think we'll just work from one end of the dais to the other. And so, we're obviously primarily talking about the breakout sessions. And if you just want to highlight one that you thought was really great, that's fine too. But I will let you guys figure that out. So, board member Campbell?
Okay, I will highlight my two favorite sessions that I attended. I attended many more, and the discussion with my fellow board members, Dr. Buck, Linda, was fantastic. I appreciated that opportunity as well. The two favorite sessions that I went to, I attended an unschool session with folks from Liberty School District. And they shared information. I think, Dr. Hendrick, you and I were both there. I think, I can't remember, board member, Vice President Marshall, if you were there as well. But this was just a great way to hear how they have changed some things in their alternative. They don't have bells. They work on project-based focus. It's a lot of what I know we've got started and going in our district. But this was really just peeling back the layers of sitting at a desk, changing classes, and just thinking about it completely differently. And I just loved the session. I thought it was great learning, great opportunity for us to continue to grow and move in ways that we're already making moves. So, it was really exciting to hear about how effective that is with their students and their success rate in graduations with those students, and I thought it was great. with those students, and I thought it was great. I love what Mr. Campbell is doing here in our district with our alternative school, SRA, and I just applaud those folks in Liberty as well. It was a great session and really kind of got those wheels spinning about how exciting education is from where we've come from, from an education standpoint. The other session I went to, and Dr. Buck, you hit the nail on the head, it was Health Clinic for our students. You know, things about being a working parent, having to take off and take your child to the doctor, or having to take off and bring your sick child home and take them to the doctor, all of those things that we can look at and do differently for our working parents and for our students, for our students that don't have healthcare opportunities or vaccination opportunities, and just really exploring how we can bring health care to our students. I think that's a really exciting opportunity as well. So the more we can do and explore, I'm all in. Thanks.
Appreciate it very much. Board Member Hedrick?
Okay, the session that Board Member Campbell just talked about from Liberty, they called that personalized academic exploration, which I thought was an awesome title, and I thought, I like that. I think I need to write that down. So I wrote that down. The other session I attended was the Director of Certification for the Department of Education, and he really was really talking about bad news in terms of teacher certifications are down and just a number of things that they're seeing a decline in every area of certification at the state level. Some of the stuff that he said was very alarming to me in terms of that, but let me, I just want to mention a couple of things. Number one, Missouri has a lowest starting salary compared to eight, the eight border states. That's just starting salary. So one thing, you know, as we were talking about growing your own, they did a survey of students in the state, and 60% of the students in the state who took the survey said they had never heard about being a teacher as a career. So I think that's something we need to keep in mind as we're talking about grow your own. Just a couple of other really things that, if I can see with my foggy glasses here, you know, we're talking about the number of teachers leaving the profession, and it said less than half of the teachers who finish year five go on to finish, go to year six, and that like about 52% of the teachers hired during 2019 were first-year teachers. So I think, you know, we talked about, we've got some real issues to address as a state, and, you know, one of the things that we talked about was the things that are important to teachers in terms of, you know, why they consider leaving pays the number one reason. Secondly, is administrator that they work for, and then the third one is the support they feel like they receive. So again, I think that from a teacher perspective, those are the things that we ought to be addressing. And then finally, one of the things that I thought was very important and I mentioned to the gentleman from the state was that, you know, I think we need to be looking at our state laws in terms of salary schedule structure and benefits to see if there's some things in that area or arena that we can potentially implement that would help us attract and retain teachers. And one of the things that I'll tell you from my doctorate work is that my research that I did, because it was all about pay, of course, but one of the things that, one of the article research pieces that I looked at was about national teacher board certification. And this research basically indicated that just the process of going through that certification made the person a better teacher, even if they didn't get the certification. And one of the things I thought of for us is, I know we do have a stipend for national teacher board certification who actually receive it, but they were talking about maybe doing a scholarship to help pay for that because it is kind of an expensive thing as the person is going through that, but then recognizing also that on our teacher salary schedule, just like we do advanced degrees. So I just think that's some things that gives us some options to think about as we look to addressing some of the needs in that area. And that's all I'll talk about. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hedrick. Board Member Allen?
Sounds like we have a Team Lee Summit topic of discussion right there. I see Dr. Buck, I see Dr. Buck taking notes. Well, those two are well, well organized. I just had some highlights in the program. Competency-based learning, I think that was held in the Oklahoma Room. That was about 110 degrees. So that was some folks from Liberty, again, right? And I think, was that the same? I don't think it was the same piece. This really centered around three pieces that I could, in my notes, and truly every child being proficient and empowered in their own pace, so to speak, working on a very individualized empowerment program. NWEA is perfect for that, I think, right? Sort of pairing into that growth mindset, working and adapting to change, and then ownership of their own learning, right, through the student and parents or guardian and family engaged, high expectations and a valued member. Back to our belonging piece of our retreat and truly meeting the student where they are. And I guess the case study was around Drummond Elementary in Pattonville, and that was a tremendous discussion. The other one that really stood out as far as a session goes is the recruiting teachers, right? Teachers recruiting, future teachers, perspectives, growing your own program. And Ovi from Lee Summit, Assistant Principal at Lee Summit High School, was there, and I think, I mean, each person had energy, but Ovi has some passion and some energy into direction that I was ready to change my career. You may not accept me in the teaching field, but he is, he's one that gets the fire lit. And it just, it, yeah, I'm not going to go into detail, but I took some notes on that, and I thought that was very intriguing and certainly facing challenges in our world of education and, boy, 2020 and the hypersensitive criticism of educators at times was a little bit, a little bit much. So those two stood out.
Appreciate it. Board Member Marshall?
Thank you, President Murdock. The two that stood out to me that I attended was the legislative roundup, and that more so was a kind of a snapshot of what had happened throughout this entire year. So kind of just a summary, which was very helpful with the notes that they gave us and the presentations that they provided after the roundup was over. So that way, we could take it back to our constituents and let them know that all of these pieces of legislation throughout the year that had impacted schools, this is how they impacted, and where do we go from here? And like I say in all the previous meetings, three clicks and you can contact your legislator and state your position one way or the other. The most impactful one that I was very excited about was the MSBA Equity Policy Toolkit that was led by Ms. Janet Tilly there, and she is beginning the construction work of the equity policy from the MSBA standpoint. So being able to participate and interact with other board members and superintendents from other districts across the state and helping her to craft that, or just beginning to craft that rather, so that eventually we will have participated in the equity policy for the entire state, because that is very important work, so that we can get every student what they need, so they can be successful and define what success is to them in life. So that, there will be a lot more coming from MSBA regarding that topic.
Appreciate it. Board Member Fritchy?
Thank you. And Janet Tilly also asked us if we'd send our rough draft or when we have our rough draft of our equity policy to her too. So Megan, I think, said she would do that, send that to Janet, our rough draft of our equity policy. So yeah, I sat in on that one too. I already mentioned at our board meeting on our reports last time, but on the Grow Your Own, Paul Katnick from Dussie, is that how you say his name, Dr. Buck?
Yes.
Okay, he's a friend of yours, I think. He said that there's a 40% drop in enrollment in our teacher preparation programs in the state, and that 11% of our staffs like turn over every year, new hires each year, and he said that's 8,000 slots in the state of Missouri. And when you figure that 3,300 graduated and took certification exams in the state of Missouri last year, and you look at that number that you need to fill versus the number that are coming out of colleges, we're really in a crisis mode in terms of needing to recruit and to promote education. And I'm going to get on my little horse here on this one. I think when we see lots of negativity and people slamming, you know, our school district and some of our teachers and some of the things that happen and just make it and pile on and make it a big deal, this does not help us to recruit new teachers. And we need to do everything we can to support our students who have, would like to become teachers, and Grow Your Own is our program that we do have in the district, and several districts do have that program. And it was, it was great to hear from these districts. In one district, it was Columbia, they said that they match each recruit in their schools with a strong, positive educator. And I love that because that person stays their mentor throughout their program, whether that's, you know, usually a couple of years throughout their program. I think that's really important. They also said they recruit students who have grit, not your straight A students, but students who have a GPA of 2.7 or higher, and most of those are coming from their first-time college for their family, those students are. So I really enjoyed listening to these professionals from the different school districts in the first session, and then we got down to it brass tacks, and that's when Ovi was helping with that second session. North Kansas City says that they have their students in their Grow Your Own program work for their before and after-school programs, their BASS programs. So they actually hire them to directly work with the kids in their school. So I thought that was a great idea too. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know exactly how our Grow Your Own program works. I think I'd like to know more about that in our school district, more than I can, that we just learned from Ovi's presentation. I'd like to know how that spreads out to all of our secondary schools and how we work on recruiting and what our system is, and how we keep those kids in the system and support those kids. In some school districts, even if the student sticks with it, they give them like, they have a scholarship through their foundation that they give to the kids to help them with college. So I think that's a great idea. So, you know, just if we could keep working on it.
So Ashley Turner's got our new Grow Your Own teacher. By the way, it was also kind of nice, I was in that session too. You had another district I kept referring to Kathy Nash as her mentor getting her program started. So it was kind of fun to see. But yes, we have our Grow Your Own program. We're lining out the details as far as when they go to college, because this is the first year of our Grow Your Own program. We think within a couple of years, we'll be the largest in the state. We have partners with UCM, and we're looking at not only having a paid stipend teacher to be a mentor while they go through college, but also the University of Central Missouri is going to provide an alumni. So we'll have two mentors during summer school of every summer. We're going to try to also have an educational experience where they get paid to work summer school, but they'll be partnered with a veteran teacher at the same time. And then if they meet certain metrics, then go through the hiring process as well at the end. And then one of the things we're looking at too is what our capacity is and could we do some loan forgiveness at the end of that. And so in a future date, we'll have a work session with you, but there also will be a time when we come to you and say, are you okay if we do a contract with people before they enter college, that if they meet certain X, Y, Z, and they get hired by us and they work two years, that we forgive their loan for them. So that piece is coming, but we're very excited about what we're working on. I can't thank Jeremy Bonnison enough and the UCM crew and Kathy Nash, who we've partnered with, Paul Katnick, we've partnered with Columbia School District, went through all their processes, learned from what their successes were and what their hurdles were. And I think we're going to hit the ground running here this year, and we're pretty excited about Ashley Turner moving over from West High School over to be the leader of our Grow Your Own program. And we're already one of the leaders of helping our paras become teachers. We have a program associated with that with UCM, and we have a great program there because we know our paras like kids. They like the work, and they're choosing to stay and move up into the teaching ranks, and we have a program where we help them out. So Dr. Del Sim has been integral in that piece too. So thank you to Dr. Del Sim.
Kind of mirrors a police academy in hiring and how they're going about it right now. So thank you, Board Member Fritchy. Board Member Sparks?
I'm not going to bore you with all of the same thing. Many of us kind of got to be part of the same class. I did get my board certification, and then also I was able, I am, me and Kim are delegates for MSBA, and so we elected two officers this year down in that session. So that's all I have to say.
Appreciate that. My two items real briefly for the board are, the first one, Ms. Ismer and I were in a session together actually on trafficking centered around students and the myriad of platforms and online issues that our students face. And I think overall the statistics are pretty mind-boggling in not only how often new platforms are coming up that you just can't even keep up with essentially, or how well students are able to hide what they are doing, but on the flip side, I think the stat that kind of caught me was that it takes less than 90 seconds for a predator to access a new, essentially target, once they have posted either pictures, a new profile, whatever the case may be. And so that was something that we participated in, and then, you know, I think the end result was, is, the presenter was just talking about, it just was further proof of the importance of student-teacher relationships and being able to identify any changes that are going on with those particular students, the role of the mandatory reporters that school districts play in some of these different issues. And so I think that that was pretty telling as they went through that particular session. And then the only other thing I wanted to highlight for all of you, and I know I've told you guys this numerous times now, I did at the Board President's Workshop, as people were describing what was going on in their districts throughout all of last year, I just want to echo to all of you, we were not alone in the, I mean, and I do think that's important, that we were not alone in the issues that we faced, in the divisiveness of one topic versus another in terms of having 50% wanting one thing, 50% wanting another. We certainly were not alone in that. And I think ultimately, it was interesting because obviously, you know, that workshop was, quite honestly, very diverse in terms of urban, suburban, and rural districts that participated in that. And I think the overriding theme was, is that it would have been nice at a state level to have gotten a little more backing from our legislature on some issues. And that came from almost every single district when we were kind of talking about some of those things. And then the other thing that kind of came out from it was people talking actually as we kind of started to predict this year. And it was interesting because, you know, I hadn't met a lot of those people, and we now have a group of about 45 of us that kind of message back and forth. And I will tell you the issue we are going through tonight, many districts are going through the exact same issue. So I just think that it's important to understand that this is not localized here to us. And I think that that, we need to remind ourselves sometimes of that. So. Okay, we are going to go on to 3.02. This is the legal RFP, and I just want to give the board a quick update here. And having talked with Vice President Marshall and Dr. Buck, this has kind of turned more into a process item, but I'm happy to answer any questions or if you guys want to discuss this. After hearing from several of you in regards to the legal RFP, we kind of made the decision that we're going to hit the brakes just a little bit here. And instead of approving one general counsel essentially coming up, that instead what we're going to do, and I think what is supported by the board, is we can approve an entire suite of firms, and that could be used by the district, but that would allow us as a board to then bring those same firms in and ask them questions. Those will be the top four scoring firms from the RFP, and we can do that in early to mid-September and bring each one of those firms in and ask some questions that are a little bit more specific to the needs of the seven of us and some of the issues that arise for us as a board. And then we can make a decision as to who we would like to be our legal counsel at the September board meeting. So. be our legal counsel at the September board meeting. So that's kind of the update on, on that. It still would give the leeway to administration when they have some of those specialty needs to seek out any of those firms. I think that's what we kind of agreed upon, right, Dr. Buck, is that still gives that flexibility to staff when they need specialties from any of those firms that we would approve, but then gives us a little bit more insight and allows us to ask those questions of those firms that we might have as board members. So if you have questions about that, let me know, or if you have a thought. But that's kind of the, the process that we're going to follow here for 3.02. Anybody have any thoughts or questions on that, or did we sum it up okay? Or Board Member Sparks?
Sorry. I just want to make sure that, that I'm clear, that we are not going to make a decision even on the sweep until after we're able to meet and interview these firms?
We will make a decision on the suite of firms actually before, so that then we can interview, then we can actually sit down with all four of them.
I'm just going to just be very open. I personally don't feel comfortable with approving a sweep of the four firms until actually I'm given the opportunity to meet with them. I just feel with it being an attorney or a firm that would be representing the board, I feel like the board should have probably had a little bit more access to these firms prior to making a decision. And again, that's just my personal opinion.
Okay. And I, and I think I would probably just offer to that, that, you know, in terms of selecting the firms or with, when we select anything, in this particular case, that that RFP process was extensive and that included a large group of people who will have to access those services as well. So in this particular case, we would still have the opportunity to select one of those firms for us and have this kind of a similar question and answer period with those particular firms. I'm going, kind of going in order here. So Board Member Campbell?
I think maybe just to clarify, because, so let me ask this question. So we went through the RFP process. We have this group of firms. I think what I'm hearing you say is that for questions that may come from Dr. Buck or from his team within the district, we're saying any of these firms would be open for that work. The, to me, a separate bucket is a firm that will work with us and guide us as board members. Did I get that right?
That's, that's correct. We really wanted to make sure that we were honoring that RFP process with how it was scored by those team members to make sure that the firms that were, those top four scoring firms would at least have an opportunity, if administration wanted to use their firms for any work, that they would have that, that opportunity.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
And then, what?
The, the purpose of being able for us to ask questions will help us have a more informed vote when we do vote on the firm that's going to represent us.
Us.
Us, correct. The board attorney. And that, correct me if I'm wrong, that interviewing process, or not interviewing process, excuse me, questioning process would be a closed session?
I believe that it would be a special closed session, I believe is, is what we were told that it could be.
Okay. So I think that was probably, it sounded, just from the questions, it sounded like that there was a bit of confusion on what we were doing and in what order we were doing it in. So that's just allowing us the chance to ask those questions, to help us vote on which firm we want to represent the board.
That's correct. Yes.
Sorry. Just to clarify then, that suite for our administration to use, we're going to, we're, that's going to be on our August agenda, is that correct? And then we would interview the firms sometime in September that would represent the board, and we would make that decision for the board's representation at the September board meeting.
And, well, actually, kind of. We can, sorry, no, no, no.
I'm just trying to understand.
No, it's okay. From a process standpoint, we could, we can approve those top four scoring firms in the August meeting. We can ask the questions of the firms in that special closed session. We would not necessarily have to vote on who's going to be our board counsel because we'd already have approved all of those firms for use within our district. Now, if we want as a public facing thing and to say, hey, yeah, this is who it's going to be, and we want to put that out into the public, hey, this is who we selected, we absolutely could do that in a September meeting. But since we've already approved all the firms, we could just choose them, let them know, hey, we're going forward with you as the general counsel for the board. Uh huh. Board Member Fritchie?
Yeah, just for clarification, because some people are probably wondering, why would they need four different firms to do this? So it's kind of a two-pronged question. What departments were represented on the RFP team that would use these attorneys so that we can get an idea of what situations we would use different attorneys for? You know what I'm saying? Because I know like special education law, there's certain, there's certain firms who are really experts on special ed law. So you would use them for sped issues, and then certain firms would be different for like for construction issues.
Correct, correct.
Whatever.
Yeah. So on the RFP team, and if I mess this up, you can feel free to correct me, we had representation from operations, we had representation from special education, we had representation from human resources, we had representation from business services. I was on, on the team as well. Dr. Barker was on the team, and Dr. Hill was on the team as well. So, so we had a, did I miss anybody? I'm sorry. Well, I got her from operations. So, you know, I could call you out by name if you need me to. So, but, so we had, we had a wide array, and those typically are the departments that use the services the most. Yeah, I got her. Oh, yeah, yeah, business, purchasing, distribution, sorry. So, all right.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was out there in TV land was clear that you, that you might use four different firms because they are experts at different things.
Yes. And we already have a couple of these firms that we're using currently. So I think that that's something else to keep in mind.
Right. Thanks.
Uh huh. No problem. Board Member Allen?
Does the, say we get down to this list of four, does that prevent us from using other firms who may not have, you know, been able to respond to this RFP process if we needed somebody in the area of whatever expertise?
We would come to you and ask for approval first. So that happened this year when there was a conflict of interest for one of our approved law firm, and thus we used a local law firm for that small item. So we came to you and asked permission to add that for that limited scope.
Okay.
Be on an individualized basis at that point.
Yeah. As well, I don't want to dismiss, obviously, an RFP process that is working with many, many situations. And I may have been one that sent you a note along the way that said it'd be nice to definitely have differentiation of a firm that's representing the board, and we have clear identification of whose responsibilities are who's, butchered that English, I'm sure. So I appreciate the fact that we're able to go through that step and understand what that means. I have some, knowing that this was going to be the discussion, I have some questions ready. So, awesome. Thank you. Yes, in September. Thanks.
It's like, I can't help you with that. Any other questions or comments related to this legal RFP item? Okay, we're going to need to rescue Joe to bring him back in, please, if we can, for the final item of this evening, which is going to be a very brief discussion about some sunshine law issues and requests that we have gotten. So we'll give Joe just a quick moment to get back in here. Hopefully he will run. Okay, so with 3.03, Mr. Hatley, we're going to actually start with you. So you don't even have to sit down. See, we're just trying to help out. There you go. So I was just filling in the board members. So if you could kind of start us off just a little bit with kind of the, the sunshine law, and I know you went over it with some of the closed stuff, but what it is, and then go over just a little bit about some of the recent decisions associated with it, and in relation to some of the requests that we have gotten. And then we'll talk about as a board, kind of what we need to decide.
Sure. The Missouri Supreme Court decided a case in late June that is having some ramifications for school districts here and, and really government bodies all over the state. Up to that time, there was some question, if somebody submits a sunshine law request and it captures 10,000 documents, and those, and a lot of times we'll get email requests, which are kind of the prime example. And sometimes those emails will include, there will be some confidential emails that may involve a student or personnel issue, and they may be perfectly innocuous. It would be public records. So somebody has to sit down and go through those emails to decide what is exempt under the sunshine law, a student record, for instance, and what is not. And, and that's not always cheap. So there was a lot of discussion and debate as to whether a public body could charge the person who's made the request for the cost of doing that. And it was an open issue under the sunshine law, and, and there was one case that suggested maybe they could, but this case involved the governor's office. And the Supreme Court concluded that, no, those costs could not be passed through under their interpretation of the sunshine law. What we can charge for, and I'll use my email example again, because that's one that we're currently dealing with, is, for instance, if we get a request for emails, somebody in the technology department has to run that search. We can charge for that person's cost. We got another, another request recently for some lesson plans that were actually going to require a survey of every teacher in the district as that, as that request was written. And it was going to require each teacher to do a search of their lesson plans, written documents. And we came up with an estimate. We could charge for that. So someone searching for documents or someone having to pull that information off the technology resources can be passed through. But the process of sitting down and deciding what can and cannot be produced under the sunshine law could not be charged through. And, and that can be very, very expensive. And, and we've had a recent request, and I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail on it, but it asked for a search of the entire email system of the district in 119 terms. And we were trying to figure out exactly how to wrestle with this, and, and so I suggested that let's run a search just on one of those terms and see how many hits it is. And one of those terms was equity. So I said, let's, let's run a search on equity. We got over 700,000 emails based on that request. And it occurred to us that there are going to be a lot of confidential closed emails in that. For instance, Dr. Barker's former title included the term equity. That might be in her email signature. Dr. Barker deals with some highly confidential student issues. So we can't just turn over every email that has the word equity in it. Somebody has to go through that, and that somebody unfortunately usually is Ms. Ismerd. So Ms. Ismerd sat down and, and tried to figure out how long it would take her to go through 700,000 emails along with doing the rest of her work. And she concluded that optimistically, if she was able to go through, what, about 500 a day, it would take her about eight years just for that one search. The other option is to just hire out and have someone do that. And I did some rough math on this, and I think you're probably looking at a cost of somewhere between 70 and $100,000 for someone to do the search and review of just the emails hitting that one term. We also looked on that, in that request, can we string together all these search terms in one search so that we only have to do this once? And, and we don't have the ability to do that, apparently, according to, to the technology department. So, so that really presents, presents you and a lot of other school districts with a dilemma, because a lot of school districts are getting hit with some, what I think are coordinated sunshine law requests revolving around some of the hot topics that, that come before the board every month. And, and it's getting to be a burden. And the question arises, you know, can you do anything about that? I'd looked into this a while back and for another client and concluded that potentially there's a Hancock Amendment problem with this interpretation of the sunshine law. The Hancock Amendment is something that Missouri adopted back in the 80s, I believe, that essentially, one of the things it does is it prohibits the state government from imposing unfunded mandates on local governments like school districts, cities, and counties. Hancock Amendment wasn't an issue in the Supreme Court case because it involved the governor's office. But it would be an issue in a sunshine law case involving a school district, a city, or a county. And I've talked with MSBA, talked with an attorney for the Missouri Municipalities League, and we all agree that there is potential Hancock Amendment violation if you, as a school board, had to pay $100,000 to pay someone to go through these emails. The, the problem with the sunshine law in Missouri is that it has no check. There's no mechanism under which you can stop someone from simply abusing the system. And, and this decision simply makes that worse. In Kansas, for instance, under Kansas open records law, you can make a determination that someone's making a request in bad faith for abuse, you know, abusing the process and, and simply refuse to honor it. You have to prove that that's their purpose. And I've had to do that a couple of times, but it's pretty rare because most of the requests are in good faith. But I'm, my concern is that folks are going to see this opinion and make requests, not necessarily in good faith, but simply as a way to impose a burden on you or other school districts. And I guess the question arises, you know, at what point do we decide, okay, this is one we're going to push back on? And, and I know we're, we're communicating with the person who submitted this request, but obviously, if you multiply that cost times 119 terms, and there may be ways that you filter it to get that down a little bit, but you're still talking about a tremendous amount of money. And at some point, we have to make an effort to push back and at least test out whether the Hancock Amendment permits this. Because there are some decisions I think would support the argument that, that this is a violation of the Hancock Amendment.
Is there, has there been anything from a, from a school district perspective across the region in terms of what is considered a reasonable or unreasonable request? Like, has there been any threshold essentially set that you know of, even, even on the Kansas side?
Yeah. Well, we've not, we've never really had to deal with that before because before we, we felt that the law might allow those charges to be passed through. So you would say, here's what this is going to cost. And the person would say, okay, well, it's not really what I'm, I'm going for. And a lot of times with, with people, you can, you can communicate with them. I'm dealing with this with another client right now, where we go back to the person, we think it's in good faith, they simply ask for more than they really thought they were asking for. You communicate with them and say, look, here's what's going to be involved. Oh, I didn't know that. Let me ratchet it back. And, and here's what I'm really looking for. You can communicate and work with them. In my sense, as long as people are willing to do that with you in good faith, if you say, look, this is an astronomical cost, tell us what you're really searching for, we'll try to find that. You can work with them. But short answer your question, we've never really had to deal with it because we've never had this interpretation of law that we've had to deal with until what we're dealing with now. We were always before able to push back and ask for those review costs, and now we're being told we can't do that.
Other questions for Mr. Hatley associated with this? Board Member Allen?
Thank you, sir. Joe, thanks for being here, and thanks for enlightening us a little bit on this issue. I know we talked about it briefly before. So email was sent in requesting that sunshine 119 terms. One of those terms was equity.
Right.
Generated 700,000 emails because it's not just board emails, it's student emails, it's all of the vendor emails, it's all of it, right? So one term, 700,000 emails, thought that that might be parsed down to 100,000, still that takes Linda eight years. Or we hire somebody to do that, and that's $100,000. If I'm not mistaken, $100,000 of time and cost and effort would be, in fact, taxpayer money, which would be the highest and best use of taxpayer money, I'm sure, for an individual's request for a sunshine, or individual sunshine request. We're doling out $100,000 for somebody's cheap thrill. Yeah, pretty much. So that takes down to 118 terms. So 118 terms, I don't know. Throw out some of those terms that were thrown in there, just so we have an idea of the futility of what this might actually result in.
And one was, I, I know one was critical race theory.
CRT, of course, yes.
CRT, racism.
Racism, okay.
I'm, I'm.
Equality.
Equality.
Transgender, I think, was thrown in there. All, all the hot buttons today, right?
Yeah, pretty much every hot button issue that you all have to deal with.
All right. So the question becomes, you know, the seven of us may not be the ones to stand in the way. It may be somebody out there hearing this, listening to this, going, wait a minute, whoa. So Linda Ismerd, whomever is going to be assigned the task. wait a minute, whoa, so Linda Ismer, whomever, is going to be assigned the task of drilling down on these things, and her highest and best use of time, of course, is to parse through 700,000 emails because she has nothing else to do, okay, well, hopefully, there'll be some folks out there saying, totally ridiculous, let's talk this through, to some bodies that be in Jefferson City possibly, my hometown, that might have some sense, okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, one thing I'll point out is that the legislature this year did pass an amendment to the sunshine law that allowed for the redaction of certain information, I believe, if people write to their legislator, school board member, whatever, and, you know, and that's sort of what I would call a government-friendly amendment, and the governor vetoed that, so, we, you know, if if we can't get it through the legislative process, you know, I think I think going through the courts is the only way to try to get some relief here.
Board member Hedrick?
So in the sunshine law, is there any provision that would mandate or dictate the length of time that the district would have to respond to a sunshine law request?
You you've also hit on another conundrum, because generally, we're supposed to respond within three days, and and normally, if something's fairly discreet, a lot of times, we can actually get the records out within that time, or at least tell someone, we will have this to you within a week, or, you know, some some reasonable period of time, so that's the that's the conundrum, you know, the sunshine law wants us to get these records out fairly promptly to people if they're open, but if the process of deciding what they get is so involved, they don't get the records for a long time, so, you know, the argument I used to make was, if we can pass this cost through, we can hire temporary staff to come in, give them instructions, and get you the records, you can either get them fast or you can get them cheap, but you can't get both, and.
Well, I was just going to say, I think, you know, based on the intent of the sunshine law, probably responding in eight years wouldn't be satisfactory, so we would probably have to go the other option to do whatever we could to hire people, so it would likely be more than $100,000 for the one term, so, you know, of those 119, that's only $12 million that we would waste having somebody review email, so, you know, in in that term, if you put it in in that kind of sense, to me, it's like, this this request is ridiculous and we ought to push back.
Board member Marshall?
Just a question for clarification, Mr. Hatley, so when responding to the sunshine requests for the specific terms that were asked, if a constituent or somebody in the community stakeholder, whichever, sends us an email that has those terms in there, or anybody in the district sends them an email, when those emails, you know, given that they're sanitized and all of that, are turned over to whoever it is that's requesting those emails, is the information of the person who sent it to us also given to that requister?
Yes, we we actually looked into this about a year ago, or two years ago, because the school district got in a sunshine law request for some board member emails, emails to board members, and at that time, the governor was taking the position that communications like that to the governor's office, he could redact out the name of the person who sent it, and there's actually some, you know, some theory that you're protecting people's right to petition the government under the First Amendment, and if you expose that information, you're opening them up to harassment, so rather than fight that, we actually asked for the Attorney General to give us some guidance on that, and the Attorney General said, well, even though we're taking that one position in court for the governor, no, you shouldn't do that, so, what we've had to do whenever we get requests like that is we do have to provide, include the name and email address of the person who's made the request, or who sent you an email.
Thank you.
Board member Campbell?
I just want to clarify a little bit, because the sunshine law, you know, we've discussed it tonight, no one in this conversation is saying that there is anything bad with the sunshine law, we all respect and appreciate that that law and and what it encompasses, what what we're really talking about is a good faith request versus just a cumbersome request to that that is not in good faith, is that, can can I clarify that a little bit more?
And I don't necessarily mean to impugn the motives of anyone who makes a request, they may have a legitimate request for asking for, legitimate reason, rather, for asking for that, but when the cost of that is so exorbitant, and we're looking at theoretically having no choice but to pay that, or push back, or simply refuse to honor it and wait to be sued, that's the dilemma we're under, no, it's, Ms. Ismer, I think, handles quite a few such requests, and they never even come to my attention or anyone else, she's able to handle those because most of them are non-controversial, but you get one like this, and even if the person is subjectively acting in good faith, it comes at a tremendous cost for the district.
And highlighting board member Allen's point about, we are stewards of taxpayer dollars, and that's really a driving force in that cost, because when when we look at a lot of decisions that we make as a board, it's a matter of spending taxpayer dollars for the education of our students, and, yeah, and so that's really a driving force here.
Right.
Thank you.
Board member Sparks?
So, Dr. Buck, with the information that legal have just given us, and would this mean for our district if we, if this type of behavior was allowed, that like our deaf and hard of hearing programs, special education, our sports programs, that possibly, if this behavior was allowed, that we would then lose, we could, we were basically chancing of losing these services for our district?
It puts everything in in play, yes, just to give you an example, giving one step to teachers and staff, that's two thousand, just shy of 2,800 employees, that costs a little over $4 million, so that's all we were able to give last year, so if you get 10, 12 million, I don't know what number Dr. Hedrick threw out there, you're talking about freezing salaries and and looking at cutting programs.
So I just want to make sure, so, you know, Dr. Hedrick gave, from what she learned in MSBA, she talked about how a lot of teachers are complaining already about their salaries, and that's why they don't want to go into the field of education, so that's also us even going into risk of not even having teachers to teach our students if we can't pay for them.
About, I don't have the exact number, 80 to 85% of our budget is salary and benefits.
Thank you.
Board member Hedrick?
Yeah, just a quick question, were you able to find, or in your conversation with the MSBA or any other attorneys, any case law in regards to a Supreme Court decision that would have an impact on Hancock, that would there be some precedent for that, or?
Yeah, there there have been several cases, and and they can sometimes be confusing because, but where local governments have pushed back, one example was a law that required, I think, local sheriff's departments to conduct background checks on people seeking concealed weapons permits, and the sheriff said, that that costs us money, and you're telling us we have to do that, but you're not funding it, and they said that that could be a sunshine law violation, it gets a little complicated, because it depends upon whether the obligation to do something was in effect before Hancock was passed, the sunshine law has been in effect for a little bit before that, but the obligation to separate the information out came after Hancock, and that's what the Supreme Court says, is, in my view, the linchpin, we're telling you, government, you have the obligation to do that, and since there's nothing in the statute that says the person asking for it has to pay, you have to pay for that, and that happened after Hancock, and that's usually where the cases come down, if the legislature imposes a cost on local government after Hancock, that is when you'll typically have a Hancock violation, and and there have been Supreme Court cases finding Hancock violations arising from unfunded mandates, so we would simply fit this one into that and say, this is too much more like this case than the ones where you've said it's not.
Board member Fritchy?
Yeah, just a quick one, Mr. Hatley, so, what I'm understanding, if I'm wrong, please correct me, so what I'm understanding, so basically, under the current sunshine law guidelines, our parents, our students, our patrons, our staff, anyone who emails us or their administrators or whomever, does not even, yeah, student to student, does not really, cannot have an expectation of privacy.
You've actually hit on the problem, it depends on what the email says, I'll I'll give you an example, if if a patron were to write to you and say, I'm opposed to masking, I think that's a bad idea, here's why I think it's a bad idea, that's probably an open record, but if they said, my child has XYZ condition, I think this is terrible, and this is the effect it's going to have on my child, I would say that's a closed record because that's providing personal information about their child, that's the conundrum, someone has to look at the email to decide which bucket it goes into, and therefore, whether they have privacy interests that that are are not overridden by the sunshine law.
Thank you.
One one thing I'll add, there there is some rather sophisticated software you can you can acquire to try to winnow some of these emails down, we use it for big document cases, but even there, you're you have to pay usually a storage cost, for an email request like this, you're talking tens of thousands of dollars a month, you may get that 700,000 emails down to 100,000 or 200,000, depending on how it filters them, but somebody still has to look at that, so, it may not be $12 million, it may only be $4 million, $5 million, but it's it's still expensive.
Any other questions or comments on this one, I think we, I think what we'll do, Mr. Hatley, is just, we just need to continue to communicate on this issue going forward, and then if there's a true legal opinion, then we can deal with that as a board as we as we go forward in these next couple of meetings, even in the August meeting if we needed to, so, thank you very much, I appreciate it, okay, three hours and 20 minutes, we did it, so, I do believe this concludes, whoop, whoop, no, there's more? Right, I was I was going to get, I was going to let let them know that they could go, I apologize, sorry, sorry, yeah, so this does conclude the work session, we'll go back to integrity to do a motion to go into closed real quick, okay, thank you all very much.